I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business tonight will be to administer the oath of office to the newly elected Board of Education member. Kathryn Lewis, please stand. Raise your right hand and recite after me. I, Kathy Lewis, solemnly swear
I, Kathy Lewis, solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the office of school board member
of the office of school board member
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations. Vivian Parsons, please stand. Raise your right hand and recite after me. I, Vivian Parsons, solemnly swear
I, Vivian Parsons, solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
the office of school board member
the office of school board member
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. The next order of business will be the election of board officers. I will now open the nominations for the Office of President for the 2025-2026 school year. Are there any nominations?
I would like to nominate Bernice Rivera.
Bernice Rivera is the first nomination. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I'll close the ballot for the Office of the President and proceed to a roll call. Ms. Etienne?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Ms. Miles?
Aye.
Ms. Parsons?
Aye.
Ms. Barnable Pantone?
Aye.
Ms. Rivera? By a vote of six to zero, Bernice Rivera will become the Board President for the 2025-2026 school year. I now open the nominations for Vice President for the 25-26 school year. Are there any nominations?
Yes, Nohalani Etienne.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I'll close the ballot for the Office of Vice President and we will proceed to a roll call. Ms. Etienne? Ms. Lewis?
Aye. What did you say, Jamaica?
Okay. Kathy Lewis?
Aye.
Jamaica? Jamaica?
Aye.
Vivian Parsons?
Aye.
Amanda Barnable Pantone?
Aye.
Bernice Rivera?
Aye.
By a vote of six to zero, Nohalani Etienne will become Board Vice President for the 2025-26 school year. Congratulations. I'll now administer the oath of office to the newly elected President and Vice President. Bernice Rivera, raise your right hand and recite with me. I, Bernice Rivera, solemnly swear
I, Bernice Rivera, solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and that I will, sorry, and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
the Office of School Board President
the Office of School Board President
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Now administer the oath to the newly elected Vice President. Nohalani Etienne, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Nohalani Etienne, solemnly swear
I, Nohalani Etienne, solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of
the Office of School Board Vice President
the Office of School Board Vice President
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I'll now turn over the proceedings of this meeting to Board President Bernice Rivera.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Don't we have to swear you in?
I will be.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, guys. Good evening. Congratulations, Board Member Vivian and Board Member Kathy, and thank you, Board Members, for voting us in again. Thank you, we appreciate it very much. So next, we will have, we will move to Item 4A through CC, the annual appointments as presented in the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the annual appointments 4A through CC as listed? Thank you, Board Member Jamaica, second.
Captain.
Thank you, Board Member Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to approve annual appointments 4A through CC, it carries. We will now move to Item 5A through R, the annual authorizations as listed in the agenda. May I have a motion to approve 5A through R annual authorizations as presented? May I have a motion? Thank you, Board Member Kathy, second.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to approve 5A through R annual authorization carries. Next is Item 6A through R, annual designations, I'm sorry, 6A through B, annual designations as presented on the agenda. May I have a motion to approve 6A through B annual designations? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda, second. Thank you, VP. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries 6A through B annual designations. We will now move to Item 7, miscellaneous rates as outlined in the agenda. May I have a motion to approve miscellaneous rates for this year? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, VP. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to approve the miscellaneous rates carries. The motion to establish, the, um, next is Item 8, establishing the standard workday for certain titles as required for reporting purposes. May I have a motion to approve standard workday resolution as presented? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, VP, second.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to approve standard workday resolution carries. At this time, we will adjourn the annual reorganizational meeting and we will pause for one minute. And we will continue. At this time, we don't have any public comments or questions regarding the Code of Character Conduct and Support. I'm really good at wasting time as a former teacher. Seeing that there are no comments, I now close the public hearing on the Code of Character Conduct and Support. We will now begin our regular board meeting. The first item of business is the adoption of the agenda for today's board meeting. The July 9th agenda has been distributed to all members. Are there any corrections, additions, or changes? So the agenda will be adopted as presented. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes for May 21st, 2025, and June 4th, 2025, which was the work session. May I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda, second.
Second.
Thank you, VP. Any additions, corrections, or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to approve the May 21st, 2025, and the board meeting, uh, on board meeting, and June 4th, 2025, work session minutes carries. At this time, we will have any public comments? Nope, we have no public comments tonight. So we will continue with the superintendent.
So good evening, Board. Good evening, community and staff. It's been a little while since we've met, so I want to celebrate the class of 2025. This is our first meeting since graduation and just offering a heartfelt congratulations to the class of 2025 and their families. The ceremony was a beautiful celebration of our students' accomplishments and we were grateful for the weather. I know that the weather was something that we questioned throughout. But a sincere thank you to Mr. Green and the entire high school team for their outstanding work in planning out this overall event along with district and just staff as a whole. Because I mean, it's truly a team effort. Cell phone policy implementation and that we've been communicating that through our social media. We are moving forward with implementation of our new distraction-free cell phone policy, which will be fully in effect as fall. Communication about the policy began during the final weeks of school and a detailed overview is now available on our website. We are also partnering with Yonder to support a focused learning environment. Students in grade 6 through 12 will receive Yonder pouches for their phones, while elementary schools will be utilizing lockbox for secure, uh, for secure storage. We've already shared an introductory video for Yonder. In our own district, we'll be putting together some, some videos to share throughout the course of the summer and into the, into the school year. We're also scheduling family informational sessions and we'll share those dates shortly. Public comment opportunity, our 2025-2026 safety plan. Just sharing this with the community that we're inviting all stakeholders to review and provide input on the 2025-2026 district safety plan. The 30-day public comment period will open this Friday, July 11th, and remain open through Monday, August 11th. Following this period, a public hearing on the safety plan will be held on Wednesday, August 13th. Transportation update. You know, our transportation department is currently developing routes for the upcoming school year to ensure smooth and accurate services from day, on day one. We ask our families to confirm their, their addresses. If those addresses have changed, please connect with us so that we can make sure that those addresses are updated. All address changes and requests for alternate pickup or drop-off locations must be submitted by August 1st. Meeting this deadline is critical to ensuring timely and accurate transportation on the first day of school. Summer programming is in full swing. Our high school, um, summer school is being hosted at Shalmont High School this year. And this past Monday marked the kickoff of our summer programs, our elementary school camps, as well as our 21st Century Programs in middle, at the middle school and the high school, and our popular summer theater camp. I look forward to visiting those programs in the coming days. Farm to, Farm to Wheels program. We encourage families to take advantage of our Farm to Wheels program, which delivers fresh produce directly to our community. The full schedule of dates and locations is posted on our website and our social media channels. Preparing for the next school year. Planning for the 2025-2026 school year is in full swing and there are many exciting developments underway. We are especially excited about launching and opening Simon's Freshman Leadership Academy, which will offer a focused, supportive environment for our incoming ninth graders. In addition, Van Corleone will return to its original home campus and exciting moment for students, staff, and families. We are also making significant progress on capital work, which continues to enhance our, our learning environments across the district. I do want to share that part of our consent agenda items, we do have a lease, a Clarkson lease agreement. And just wanted to share with the community that we plan to relocate the Adult and Continuing Education Program from Washington Irving to the Clarkson facility. This program, this move will allow us to dedicate the Washington, Washington Irving site to the Big Picture program, which is currently co, co-located there. The Clarkson location provides a strategic opportunity to create a centralized hub in downtown Schenectady serving not only students, but families and the broader community. While adult education will be the first to move in, we're exploring additional opportunities to align the space with our district goals around equity, access, and community engagement. And last, Summer Nights Schenectady. We're doing something new this summer with the Summer Nights Schenectady program, event that takes place on Friday. Any Schenectady student who checks in with us here at 530 Liberty Street will receive a voucher for free snacks and food. Members of our IEE team and school safety team will be on-site to welcome students, distribute vouchers, and maintain a safe, supportive presence. The adjacent parking lot will serve as a cool-off zone where students can relax if needed. Our goal is to ensure that all students have fun, safe, a safe evening, where, and we're extremely grateful to the Schenectady County and the Schenectady Police Department for their continued partnership. That concludes my comments today.
Thank you, Superintendent DeCoto and Board Member Jamaica.
Hey, y'all. Um, so really brief. Summer has begun and what's been most exciting for me is seeing our kiddos not in school, but out in the community, all over the place. Because my youngest wants to be at the pool every single day. We're not there every day, but lots of kids are there. And they're, they're having fun, they're having a good time. I also want to give a special shout-out, no surprise, to Keane Elementary that has a tutoring program over the summer. And my little guy loves it, being able to go back to the building that he knows and loves and is comfortable in. Some teachers he knows, some he doesn't, but it's, even though it's only 9 to 12, it's just been an amazing experience watching him in just the last couple days, how comfortable he is, how excited he is to do reading and ELA and math to help support him over the summer and make sure he's prepared for third grade. So really appreciate that Keane continues to show up and show out. Um, and that's it for me today.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica and Board Member Amanda.
Um, I also want to extend my congratulations to the class of 2025 and remind the class of 2026 that it's unfortunately not over yet. And so, um, keep your nose in the books. Don't stop studying. You're almost there. Don't let it fall away now. Um, and then I also, to the community, just want to put it out there because the kids are running around and they're having fun. Keep an extra eye out. You know, let's keep our kids safe during the summer, too. It takes a community to help raise these kids. So let's really be intentional about making sure our kids are safe while they're running around.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. Board Member Kathy?
It was a busy June and it looks as if it's going to be a busy summer, June. For me, had, I, I visited all three of the middle schools for moving up ceremonies for eighth graders who then will be in various places in the ninth grade, between the freshman academy, the Big Picture, and, and other places. Also went to pre-K and K at, at Pleasant Valley and it's always cute to see the moments. They're so dressed up, my goodness. They're so dressed up. So the idea, of course, is to encourage them to get to graduation in 18 years or, well, no, 13 years, whatever that works out to be, they'll be 18. So, and then, of course, the major graduation on the 26th. How that turned out to be such a freezing cold night, I don't know because everything, everything before it and after it has been, has been more than a little warm. So once again, I hope everyone enjoys the summer, gets a chance to be outdoors and take advantage of the swimming program and on the other ones that are available in the community. There are food programs around. If, if you need that, please contact some people to look into those. And Summer Night is, as was mentioned, this Friday and that's always a great show, so enjoy.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Kathy and Vice President Nohalani.
So good evening. I'm going to echo, obviously, what everyone has already done. I wasn't able to attend all of the celebrations. There was a ton of stuff going on last month, but I was at the high school graduation, Washington Irving graduation. I just want to celebrate and congratulate all of the students. Job well done, super exciting just to see everybody cross the stage. You know, just being able to shake hands, the decoration, the caps, the shoes, the dances. Really, really, really nicely done. And just, I'm excited for what comes next for all of our kids. So congratulations and hopefully everyone in the district will be able to get some sort of me-time because it was a lot. So thank you for everything that everyone has done. It was truly appreciated and magical, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Nohalani. And much, many of my comments were also shared, but I do want to say many of you that are in this room, you were at the graduations, you led the graduations. Thank you. Because things were so seamless. Yes, I'm looking at you right over there. Because things were so seamless, but I think many people forget how much work it takes to make it look seamless. The students were just so happy, so proud, which, I mean, for me, it's like my favorite time of the year. It's just amazing to see. So I want to thank all of you who are also in the audience who took part in that, who were behind the scenes. And sometimes we don't see who's behind the scenes doing the work. We know there are people behind the scenes, so we want to say thank you to you. I also want to specifically mention the custodial staff, the janitorial staff, because many of you were at the graduation. That is amazing, all the cheers and, I mean, there was a lot to prepare that. And we are aware of that and we thank you for that. And the, and I know it was mentioned, but the graduations, I, I did attend Washington Irving, loved it, love it, always loved Washington Irving. It's just so great to see how proud the students are when they get their GED and they, they work.
Jesse's back there.
Yeah, Jesse, no, that's why I keep looking at Jesse. That's why I, yeah. So thank you. The middle schools, all three of them, they were, I'm not going to use the word amazing. They were great. They were great, again, seeing how proud the students were. And also, and I know Kathy mentioned it, just the opportunity that they have to branch into many different programs that we have. That's amazing to hear at Mount Pleasant that some are going to Big Picture, some are going to City as our campus, some are going to stay on the main campus. It's awesome that our students know that they have choices. So I love that. High school, ditto. The students did such a great job with the performances. The excitement was there. And I, again, thank you to all that made all of it happen. From communications as well, posting all the pictures and put, I mean, I can go, I can do the whole, the whole board meeting could be saying thank you, but I truly, truly thank everyone who was part of it. It's not easy, so thank you. So we will continue to the treasures report. So the next item is the treasures report. Are there any questions from board members? So if there are no questions, the treasures report will be put on file. Tonight, we are presenting Policy 5634, Extreme Heat Condition Days for First Reading and Potential Adoption. I'd like to invite Policy Chair Nohalani to introduce and lead discussion on this policy.
Absolutely. So, um, the Policy Committee connected, actually, the day of the Central Park graduation, one of my ladies on this, and we discussed, or, actually, I take that back, wrong meeting. That was cell phone. It was a different committee meeting, sorry. But we did connect to talk about the extreme heat and condition days. We, the week of June 20th, experienced really, really, really hot, warm weather. And we did implement some half-days schedules. So this is actually required by Education Law Section 409N and we are presenting it here. It outlines the actions and steps to be taken when we reach 82 degrees and above. So if there are any questions anyone has, please feel free to share. But we wanted to bring this for first read and adoption.
It, it's not a question you're going to have an answer to, Nohalani, and I'm not sure any of it was, but I, I've been asked, well, how many of our buildings are air-conditioned? How many of the rooms in our buildings are air-conditioned? And of course, I, I always say, well, we know that, you know, offices are generally air-conditioned and so forth, but many of the classrooms are not and they're old buildings. So I was wondering if we could learn how many, what the, what the statistics are on air conditioning in our, in our particular buildings. And particularly since we've done renovations, you know, I don't know. I mean, we've had to obviously consider the expense of doing this and it was before this law came into effect. But what, where do we stand in terms of the percentage of space that's air-conditioned?
Other than the exact numbers, I do want to say that, like, this was something that was important regarding the language inside of the policy in addressing, and it's actually the second to last paragraph. The Board is committed to taking proactive steps to reduce heat in school buildings and on school grounds. Land actions may include, and then there's a, a whole list. Because we talked about needing to recognize this isn't just about it getting over 82 and 88 degrees, but how are we going to ensure that we're moving forward to reduce that occurrence inside our buildings going forward? So it, it did come up as part of our conversation.
And I'm, I'm not surprised. I mean, many of the, but many of the other districts, of course, you know, as they've done rehabilitation on their buildings and refurbishment and so forth, they've air-conditioned them completely. And so, you know, people are kind of wondering.
Yeah, no, it's kind of focus through our streets, through our capital project. Brian's here, he's got a, you know, he's provided some breakdowns. I mean, we have been investing in buying units, even the ones that are going into windows or, and I know Brian's got more of the terminology, but we're, you know, 50% or more was my expectation to close out the year. And then I think as we go into the summers, looking to make sure that we're as close as we can be to 100%. But as we do our capital projects, it is a major focus. And, you know, as you go into Freshman Leadership Academy and Van Corleone, you'll see that, you know, within those spaces that we've done renovations. But it is an area of focus that we have and we're looking to be at 100%, even if it's units that are going into rooms.
Is Van Corleone, I mean, I toured Van Corleone. I didn't remember to ask. It must have been a cold day when we were there. But, but is that fully air-conditioned then?
The rooms, Brian, if you don't mind coming up just a short.
I mean, I know the offices are and so forth, but it's custom to.
Um, so we're making sure that it's fully air-conditioned. The rooms that weren't covered under capital, we're doing in-house. And we did do a survey district-wide, so we have the count. We have the percentage of, of rooms that are air-conditioned and ones that are not. We have a plan in place to get them 100%, which I think is a good plan and it's reachable. So we've, we've already purchased some larger units when they test in the gym. We have these, they're a condensing unit that we put in the gym, so we were actually able to cool down the high school gym, which was nice during test time.
I think they do.
Are these window units, or at least some of the window units, that are going to require quite a bit of maintenance time to put in, take out?
No, they stay in year-round, they cover them, a lot of times from the inside, but a little bit of time to put them in, but it's something we have to do, so.
Okay, thank you.
And I also attended the Howe graduation, and I did mention to Dr. Koto, it was, it was warm.
Several of our buildings are actually 100% AC, and I don't think a lot of us knew that, so
Oh, really?
Yeah, several, I said several, probably three or four, I have that document I can share with Dr. Koto.
That'd be great, I can
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, so may I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica, second. Thank you, Board Member Amanda, it has been moved, it's seconded to adopt the policy. Any other questions?
To it's
We are, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept Policy 5634, Extreme Heat Condition Days carries. Okay, so before we move to the consent agenda, and I know that Dr. Koto did mention some about the Clarkson, I'd like to provide a brief update regarding the lease of the Clarkson property. Earlier this year, the board approved moving forward with negotiations, negotiations to purchase the Clarkson building for programmatic use. The item before us tonight is a lease-to-purchase agreement, but it is important to clarify that this agreement commits the district only to a one-year lease at this time, not a purchase. Per our legal counsel, the board is permitted to enter into a one-year lease since we are actively negotiating with Clarkson and unable to include a purchase in the May 2025 public vote. The cost of the lease for the 2025-2026 school year is already included in our adopted budget, and importantly, the full lease amount will be credited toward the purchase price should we decide to move forward. If the district decides to purchase the property, it will require public approval to revoke in May 2026, and we will share detailed information as part of the 2026-2027 budget process. Based on initial projections, the purchase would have minimal impact on the tax levy, and we would finance it through fund balance or borrowing repaid over 30 years. We are committed to transparency and will engage both the board and the community in discussions as we move forward. Okay, and next, before we vote on the consent agenda, I'd like to know that it includes stipends for mentoring instructional personnel, which includes the daughter of Board Member Jamaica. To maintain transparency, we will remove that item and vote on it separately. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the stipend for mentoring instructional personnel for Board Member Jamaica Miles' daughter removed? May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Vice President.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the personnel item removed. We will now consider the removed item regarding the stipend for mentoring instructional, I'm sorry, so now with that, may I have a motion to approve 7A through DD, with the exception of Jamaica, Jamaica's daughter's stipend? May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda, second.
Second.
Thank you, was that, um
Jamaica.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Board Member Jamaica's daughter's resolution is approved. We will now consider the removed item regarding the stipend for mentoring instructional personnel separately. Board Member Jamaica Miles will recuse herself from discussion and voting on this item. May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Vice President, and second, Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries to, to approve the mentoring instructional personnel for Jamaica's daughter. Okay? And now we will also vote on business items CE through triple V. May I have a motion? Oh, yeah, hold on, may I have a motion to approve consent agenda items EE through DDD? So move. Thank you, Board Member Amanda, second.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice President. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to approve consent agenda items EE through DDD carries. Okay, our next item on the agenda is a presentation that Dr., Superintendent Dr. Koto and his team will present. As a board, one of the major responsibilities is to support and hold the superintendent accountable by conducting an annual evaluation of his work and the district's progress. Tonight, Dr. Koto and his team will be providing the first year report to the board. This is an opportunity for us to listen and learn about the work that has been accomplished over the past year. We will use our formative evaluation rubric to collect observations and provide constructive feedback that will help guide and support Dr. Koto in his continued leadership of our district. Welcome, Dr. Koto, to the presentation.
Yes, yes, well, thank you, thank you, board, and looking forward to kind of highlighting the work that we've done for this past year, and as we've shared, this cannot be done without team, so throughout today's presentation, you'll see many members of the district team sharing the successes within their respective roles, that kind of all surface back to the overall goals that are set on my end, to kind of move the district, so there are eight areas of focus, and throughout today's presentation, you'll kind of see the alignment to those eight areas. I'm going to have Mr. DiCaprio kind of lead the PowerPoint, but you know, we start all of our presentations with our, just a little bit about us, our vision, our mission, and our tagline, I mean, our vision, our tagline, and our values, and I think, even as we went through our comments this, this, just a little while ago, all of this lives within the work that we're doing, all of what was shared is, is what we're looking to do and provide to our students and our community, and it's all anchored on our strategic plan, which is what we've kind of adopted not too long ago, but we've kind of been consistent in maintaining these four pillars, at least for the four years that I've been here, and prior to that, so it's that commitment that we as a district have made in making sure that the strategic plan is what we live by, and thank our communications for continuing to align all of what we share through our social media and all of our platforms and kind of anchoring those four areas, with the ultimate is student graduate success, making sure that we're always focused in that particular area. So as I reflect on my first year, so this just finishes up my first year as superintendent here in Skenectity, I want to begin by acknowledging the five priorities that were identified by community and board before I was appointed, which was school climate and culture, continuing the work, hiring from within, academic rigor, and reviewing our administrative structure. These priorities have guided my leadership throughout the year. Together, we prioritize school climate and, and culture through intentional investments with our restorative, you know, we've done a lot of work in supporting and bringing in staff that kind of helped with the overall social, emotional wellbeing of our students as well as our staff, but an increase in restorative practice specialists, our safety and security officers, our CEOs, parent liaisons, attendance specialists, community engagement, all those pieces that played a role around the culture and climate of the district, along with just recently the, the adoption of our weapons detection, and a lot of that was all based on the feedback that we were receiving from the community in support of these particular efforts. With that said, you know, we are building a school, we are building schools that are inclusive, respectful, and nurture. Every person, regardless of title, deserves to be heard, valued, and treated with dignity. Our commitment to equity means providing every student with access to resources and opportunities that they need to thrive, regardless of their background, ability, or zip code. As a restorative practice district, we must model not just implement, we must model, not just implement our values, that means leading with empathy, consistency, and accountability in every interaction. At the center of our mission is the academic excellence for every student. We have, we have a district-wide instructional walkthrough tool to align teaching, teaching expectations, supporting school leaders, and strengthening classroom instruction. We continue to align curriculum and provide targeted coaching to improve outcomes. At the same time, we're reviewing our programs and staff through our academic return on investment lens to ensure that every resource is used with purpose and impact. I am deeply grateful to the board for entrusting me with this role. I take this responsibility seriously and remain committed to leading with that with clarity, consistency, and collaboration. Evolving where needed while honoring our progress. This work cannot be done alone. I am only as strong as the team around me. I want to thank the executive leadership team, school leaders, educators, support staff, and community partners for your unwavering commitment. I also want to thank our families and community members, whose support will be vital to the success of our scholars. It takes all of us together to make a lasting impact. This year, many of our leaders participated in professional development centered on self-care, courageous conversations, and relationship building. These are not compliance tests, they are culture, they are culture-building steps rooted in trust and wellbeing. Student voice and leadership will continue to be a key focus. This year, students co-led restorative circles, participated in leadership opportunities throughout the area, as well as this, even outside of our area, capital region, from panel discussions to informal conversations throughout our community and even within our buildings. Their insights are powerful, and we are committed to expanding meaningful opportunities for students to help shape their learning environment. We also prioritize community engagement through some, through my coffee chats, district-wide surveys, and community-led forums, listening and learning throughout the course of these last two years, which gave families, staff, and partners a platform to influence key decisions. These conversations are helping us build stronger relationships and more responsive systems that reflect the needs of our entire school community. It is truly an honor to serve as your superintendent. I thank the Board of Education for your, for your confidence, and I thank our staff, family, students, and community for your partnership and trust. Together, we are building a district where everyone counts, everybody learns, and every action is, leads with purpose, educating with hearts. As we transition, I think Joe was, no, we have identified some of our, that the domains throughout the presentation, and I think we'll have Mr. DiCaprio transition us into the presentations.
Thank you, Dr. Koto, for having me on the job. Good evening, Skenecty School Board of Education, congratulations, Bernice Nohamani, Deputy Superintendent DiCaprio here with great pride to trans, transition us from Dr. Koto's, what he referenced in, in the work was the eight domains upon which the evaluation of the rubric you hold Dr. Koto to, are, are specific to. But what, before we transition, we, we just want to uplift that this is not an exercise in compliance, it's not about the evaluation, it's about alignment with how we evaluate our leader against the actions we engage in for the betterment of our children. Alignment is everything. So the four pillars referenced in our strategic plan, which is going on a decade-old, that doesn't happen in districts, this strategic plan has become the fabric of our being as a district, it is not shelf art, it is a way of being. Our four pillars, our passionate people, our family and community engagement, our efficient systems and equitable resources are how we live, how we breathe, and how we do for our kids to uplift the most important pillar, which is our student, graduate, and achievement success. That defines our district, and what you'll hear today as we transition into folks other than myself and Dr. Koto to speak to the work, you will hear elements of success, but as part of a journey and not a singular achievement, the work is ongoing, but if we don't pause to recognize the small successes along the way without signifying the end, the work doesn't end until 100% of our children find success, both from an academic standpoint, socio-emotional standpoint, and a mental health and wellness standpoint. Until that happens, we're never fully at ease, we'll never take our foot off the gas. And so, we're, we're growing, and we're, we are finding success in small increments. What you will hear today from our divisions, some will be our executive leadership team, some will be from leaders within the division, or where some of those small successes have happened this past year, under Dr. Koto's leadership, as one executive team, and one leadership team on behalf of the district, but please know, it is not a sign of stopping any of our energies, efforts, or commitment to making the next day better than the last for every child we serve. So what we did to sort of guide and anchor the alignment, make it visible, in the lower right corner of each slide that's dedicated to each of our divisions, will be numbers of the eight domains I showed on the previous eight slides, domain one, domain two, you'll see the numbers in the lower right corner, that signifies the alignment of that particular department and division with each of the eight domains that we, we feel aligned with. So it gives you aligned evidence that has actions right in line with where our leadership evaluation falls, and hopefully you'll see that and agree that, that it's happening with regularity. So look in the lower right corner for those numbers, sorry, it's a little delay there. So I'll transition to our first slide, under Dr. Koto's leadership, myself as deputy, and our executive leadership team, 2024-25 has been a phenomenal year. Our kids have flourished, from our student board reps, our class of 2025 and all they've accomplished, to everything happening in the middle school, to, to level up, to get to high school, transitioning to a freshman leadership academy that's unparalleled in the capital region, to the amazing magic that happens at the elementary schools from our pre-K up to fifth, bringing back our choral performances, everything that happens with math, reading, you'll hear all in greater detail, it truly is amazing here in Skenectity. So it's with pride that I will turn it over to our first division, and, and it's our most important division because it anchors everything from an instructional curriculum standpoint, so while our Assistant Superintendent Teaching and Learning, Dr. Luna Chisholm, is on to greeter, pastures, literally, greeper, I worked on that one, we do have, the work is continued, credit to Dr. Chisholm and what she's established, her team's amazing, and for the past month, the work has moved at an unbelievable pace, without her there, that speaks to just the people we have leading. So at this point, I'm going to turn over to our first department report out to, to hear some successes. It's not Dr. Chisholm, it is our Director of Intervention Services, the incredible Dr. Erica McFarland. Dr. McFarland, come on up, talk to us about teaching and learning, you're right here.
I heard you say most important. I do, I'm going to go off script, I do want to start by saying, this is a little bit of pressure here, I'm, I'm actually doing this in front of my new leader here, congratulations to your appointment tonight, we're very excited to have you come aboard. So good evening, everyone, I'm excited to highlight for you the successes that have come out of the Office of Teaching and Learning this year, you've heard about a lot of them in previous presentations, so I'm going to give you the Cliff Notes version here. We begin with the pillar, that is the heart of OTL, student and graduate success. This is our first year of using Bullseye, the Bullseye instructional walkthrough tool, this tool allows instructional leaders at the building and district level to spend brief amounts of time in classrooms to document some noticing's and wonderings, and then provide timely, immediate feedback to teachers. We're going to continue that work into next year. For curriculum, as you know, OTL has spent the last few years reviewing our existing curriculum, we're making sure that the curriculum is evidence-based, aligned with current standards, and most importantly, culturally and linguistically responsive. This has led to the adoption and implementation of new curriculums. This year was the first year of full implementation for Ready Math in K through 8, and Vista curriculum for French and Spanish for world language, 6 through 12. This year, the board also adopted a new visual arts curriculum that will begin in the fall. OTL Assistant Directors and Directors have worked closely with the high school leadership and faculty to continuously develop programming and pathways for our students within each leadership community at the high school, and that continues with the freshman academy. You heard Lea Akamlaia present in the spring, not too long ago, about the ongoing work towards our development and planning for the launching of the dual-language and bilingual education program at Page in the fall of 2026. And as part of our grading policy, OTL, in collaboration with many of our teachers, began the work on developing the Common Assessments in many core areas, and this work will continue over the summer and into next year. So in addition to the passionate people that make up the OTL department, our office also supports this pillar in many other ways. OTL provides, is the lead for the professional learning for certificated staff, that includes teachers and administrators, and our goal, of course, is to ensure that our faculty have the knowledge and tools they need to ensure the academic success of all students. Some of the professional learning is developed by us and delivered by us, sometimes it's done with us in collaboration with many of our teacher leaders, and sometimes it's provided by our office bringing in experts such as the Crescento Group, who provided the grading for equity this year. So in addition to Ready Math, grading for equity, and many of the E&amp;L trainings we offered, I'm happy to say, one of my ways of trying to entice people when I'm hiring them is to say, you will never have more professional learning opportunities than this Skenectity State School District. Skenectity learns has ongoing options, a menu for teachers and staff to select from, and we continue to offer more each year. For teacher recruitment, in addition to leading the hiring process for most teachers, our office also coordinates and supports the mentoring and the ongoing support for new teachers, and we do this in collaboration with teacher mentors, our grade-level leaders, our department chairs, and our instructional coaches, and then our coaching program continues with a focus on target areas such as math and literacy. Our office is continuing to expand our work under the pillar of partnership with family and community. Becky Gleason, Jess Valente, and myself have led and collaborated many, with many other offices to lead some literacy events geared towards families, I'm very excited to talk about the one that happened on June 12th. We did not have as much high attendance that I had hoped for, but it is one of those things we developed that we could rinse and repeat, so we have, hopefully, we're going to be able to repeat it ongoing throughout the next year, and we collaborated with student support to develop and lead a family event for parents of students with disabilities, and the focus on that was on the importance of oral language development and literacy, and we partnered with the Education Foundation, and families were able to take home books and other materials that they could work to, work on oral language at home with their, their children. Jess Valente, our Assistant Director for Pre-K, has continued to build our collaboration with our CBOs for the UPK program, and she's really working to ensure that there's continuity between And she's really working to ensure that there's continuity between students who attend the CBO pre-K programs and our in-house pre-K programs. So everybody's coming to kindergarten prepared. And then, um, for world, or I'm sorry, work-based learning, we, this was our first year with Dave Preston. He transitioned from the high school to our office, and he's been working really closely with many community organizations and businesses to continue and expand the work of collaborating with those CBOs and businesses to really support the college and career readiness, looking for those real-life experiences, whether it's bringing in those, um, organizations or allowing opportunities for students to have internships. And then Erica Wardella, our Assistant Director for Fine Arts, has worked to create many opportunities for community organizations to come into our buildings, whether it's a visiting, we've had several this year visiting local authors, trips to My Side and other such things. And finally, efficient systems and equitable resources. Our office coordinated the role of the textbook clerk. We love Brittany Gibson. If you haven't met her yet, she's becoming a celebrity across the district because she's been in every building several times. And really, her role is to be the collaboration between OTL and each building to ensure that we're being fiscally responsible with our resources. So she's done a lot of auditing, um, and to make sure that every teacher has what they need at the beginning of the school year, as far as curriculum and resources go. I'm just briefly going to touch on the data, uh, the district data team. Mr. Omele, I think he's going to talk more in detail on it. It's on our slide because our offices have been collaborating and co-leading that. We've had an ongoing full year of that. We're going to talk more about it, but it's really been a nice collaboration between the two offices. And then, um, always continuing to collaborate with student support. Our MTSS work lives in both offices. Um, we're working on supporting our buildings to make sure there's continuity across buildings with how we're providing supports to all of our students, how we're using data to make decisions building-wide. And Donna's going to talk a little bit more about that under student support. Policy, lots of policies we're either revising or new ones like the AI one that went through last summer. And then finally, um, we are really, our office tries to support and lift the work of grading for Equity and the report card committees. We've been working really closely with Ms. Corniel on the report cards, which you've probably seen a lot about the secondary, and we continue to work on the elementary. I am next, I think following me is Executive Director Tyron Omele.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
All right. So, um, just a quick update on, from the Executive Director's office, myself and Tia Corniel. Um, so one of the things, like I said, I thank the board for is giving our students option. When we speak of student graduate, graduate success, secondary redesign, I can't believe it's already been three years and look at the options that we have for our students. Um, we're finally opening the freshman big, freshman, I said freshman picture. Um, freshman academy this year. Um, it's been a lot of work. Uh, we have our new leader in the space right now, Justin Lansley. We look forward to his leadership in the 2025 school year. It's a lot of work this past year getting that ready. Justin, stand up.
Yeah, he's back in the back.
Um, also, we're going to, this past year was year two of big picture. We're going into the junior class of big picture, year three. I can't believe it, it's been three years. Uh, early college, finished year three, and next year will be the first, after the 25, 26 school year, be the first graduating class. It's amazing, and thank you guys for your support on that. We had one comprehensive, now we got four. Also, um, we had 3% growth, just to continue our student graduate success. We had 3% growth between 22, 23 and 23, 24 on our, uh, New York State math assessments. Um, one of the achievements this year, right below that, we talked about, you know, Dr. I read it like two, three years ago, and we're talking about honor above grade level. The growth this year from the spring, from the fall to the spring in math, 22%, and in reading, 23%, all right? When we speak of passionate people, we got to, you know, we have some building leaders in this space. Myself and Ms. Corniel lead that particular group, uh, you know? During the 24, 25 school year, we had 100% retention of our leaders. That is huge, you know? We always have change, we always have growth. Um, we have a grow your own initiative, but last year was the first time in a long time that we saw our leaders in that space, and I think we're going to see some, um, some of the benefits from that. Um, also targeted PD, we do have what we call a Leadership Planning Council, and they're the one, this group of individuals, myself and others. You know, there's a lot of synergy or collaboration within this group, okay? Uh, we plan the PD for our building leaders and our district personnel. So we have Leadership Council. We have principals' meetings, assistant principal, P E A D meetings, and we do those either monthly, quarterly, throughout the school year. Um, when we talk about partnership with family and community, I think, you know, the true nature of this work is school staff and school administration partner with our families. That's the work. You know, I have up here an establishment of the seat center, CBLA, CBS partnership, but really the work really at the building level, and myself and Tia can't take credit for that. So we're going to pass that on to the building because that's the true work. But you know, one thing I think, you know, this board supported this particular partnership, and I got to highlight this, is just every student has a path and our job is to find that path. And you know, we have big picture, we have early college, and I think this is just another addition. And as, as we grow as an organization, as we get better, well, we do hope we'll find additional spaces for our students to be successful. And then efficient systems and equitable resources, you know, Erica, Dr. McFarland touched on redesign, the secondary report card, um, that's going to be rolled out for the 24, 25, 26 school year. Um, and a presentation upcoming, I believe we're going to present that in August. Uh, we do have a dashboard that we started talking about, I think, last October. It was October, September. Um, it's Edgenuity, who will be presented on the board on the different features. You know, it was a long process, a year-long process. And implementation of district cell phone policy, we started talking about that last year. We're in a great space. And now the key piece right now is communication to all. We have our product, we have our process, and now it's just communication. What's that, what's it going to look like? And we're going to launch that in the first day of school this year. I'd like to pass it on to Donna Fowler, the Director of Student Support Services.
One more question.
Oh.
Uh, at the end, are you over there?
Yeah, you want to. This is up to you.
No, we can do between, go ahead, yeah.
This is, this, um, wonderful what you've reported on. I'm just wondering what didn't go as well as you expected? Where there are improvements that, um, you see are needed for 25, 26 or, um, in summer?
I mean, when we think about, talk about our proficiency rates for our students, you know, when we're in the 20%, I don't have those, I got the packet behind that. I mean, that's not a number that you brag about. We, we, we love growth, but that means a lot of our students aren't proficient. That's one area. You know, this is not on there. We're talking about graduation rates, right? This is not on there as well, but we'll talk about that in August when we do our academic end year report. You know, our goal is 100% of students graduating. We don't have that. When we talk about, you know, let's, let's be honest, when we talk about some of the climate and culture, we got to get better at that in our buildings. You know, the fact that we do have some issues in some spaces, but at the same time, we're working our best. You know, that, that's another issue we could overcome. Um, we also have, when we speak about chronic accenteeism, we have to get better at that, right? Um, right now, we're in the 50%, we need to do better. We've made gains over the last couple of years, but we still need to get better. So we're making, we're making growth, but you know, as, and I'll be honest, you know, we can sit here and talk about these are things that we get better at, but we have so much work to do. Um, I believe this particular team, I think we're growing together, and we're setting, establishing the foundation for us to just do better.
I kind of have a follow-up on that. So, um, what are things, now that we've done some of these for two, three years, but some things we just started this year, what are some things that you feel are working and that we should definitely continue to support?
Well, I, I, I will, let's start from the top. I think it was, I think it was a really big pitch, you know, the investment of breaking apart the high school. I'm hoping that we'll see the return on that by improvement in graduation rates, and we could see that, just, you know, that data will come in three to four years. And that's, and I think that's working. I think the positive, um, sometimes you have to look at the qualitative data instead of the quantitative. At this particular point, I think that is working. Um, I believe that, you know, if I'm just looking at this list right here, our professional development is getting better for our leaders. We're being more strategic, aligned to the strategic plan as we speak right now. Um, it's really, in this room today, we have four or five new leaders joining our team, right? And our job as a district office to build capacity, that's what it comes down to. So I think we have the mechanism within our system to develop our leaders, and it's just being very strategic. We know now that we have the, we, we have the, we have our, and I don't want to say end goals. We have our goals. And I'm going to say this, we have our D sub. We have the document that drives our outcomes. And now is what professional development, what resources do we have put in place to drive our leaders to get those outcomes? So I think that's really working well. We're building these systems in place to get, kind of get it done. Um, when we talk about partnership with family and community, I think it's just this idea that, I think Erica touched on it, some of the points I touched on, she touched on as well, and you're going to see the same. I think it's the synergy and collaboration between the two different departments. I couldn't imagine saying that, hey, we're going to open up the freshman academy without direct collaboration with teaching and learning, without direct collaboration with student, um, support services. I don't know how most districts are, but I, you know, I applaud Dr. Coto, and he emphasized we can't do this by ourselves. We can't. And you know, I think that's working very well. And as far as I think where we're going, we're, as a team, and I'll say this, we're doing a better job of making decisions based on the data. And we're driving towards, that is our goal. You know, when we talk about the dashboard, that's, it's just the principals are asking it for more and more because that's how decisions are made. That's how we prove outcomes for the students, right? It's like, there's two phases, I think, in education. There's that and there's relational, right? And you can't do, we can't move the system without both. And I think for a while now, it was building that relational, relational. Now it's time to be strategic, and one of those different pieces to be strategic and move the work forward. So in summary, I would say there's a lot of things going well, but I'm going to go back to my original statement. We're at the baseline, and we're just starting to see some of the fruits of our labor. And I think the most important part is the dependence on each other to get the work done.
Thank you.
What is CBLA? I, I looked at this earlier and I can't remember. It's something leading, a leadership academy with.
No, CBLA, if I, I'm not going, the acronym. This is me, this is from, I call it narrative product. The virtual, it's the virtual learning academy. We did a presentation.
I thought it was, uh, Learning Academy at the end, I thought virtual was there, but.
So essentially, if you understand.
It's the C.
If you understand distance learning, that is the distance learning piece component.
Okay, thanks.
I remember him when he presented.
Yeah.
I remember when he was here. I forgot to see.
I think one thing to kind of also package is that, you know, the investment that we've made in over three years going into this year has been a lot. And I think when we look at the academic return on investment, this is the time. I mean, this dashboard is going to play a key role, and I'll be shared that, um, last year in kind of connecting these dots and then looking to see how we continue to support. But ultimately, we're meeting our kids where they are and finding ways in which to get them to where we know we want them to be. And it's building those relationships as well.
I have one more question. The CBLA was the least, but.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, no, it's all right, go ahead.
Oh, it, it, Brittany's asked you about what should be continued, what ought to be discontinued? That didn't work.
What could be discontinued?
I, I think at this point, we've got to invest in what we have and then look at the, the data. Now, this, like I said, this dashboard is going to play a major role. And I've been working with the CFO and really looking at this academic return on investment, and we're investing now, I mean, in, in kind of digging deep into this data to inform. You know, so I think it, right now, I don't see anything that, I believe everything that we have is what we need. It's just, we've got to, you know, I've been sharing this with many. Like we have all the parts of the machine or the car. It's moving despite those parts not being where they should be. But that's the work that we have ahead of us, is putting those, those parts where they belong and have this car move as efficient as we need it to move.
But just, and just to answer your question, you know, I, I don't think I'd even be able to answer that question on this particular piece because it's, you know, that's a question for the team, our district team, to look at the data, to look at the parts, for me to make that statement in isolation. I don't think it'd be fair to Dr. Seer, the team itself, you know, so.
Remember, Megan, thanks.
My comment is more of a, of a reminder and an ask to, to let us know when things aren't working. I just, I'm afraid that a lot of times, because we're all so passionate to do good work, that I'm, I get concerned that a lot of this is sort of like sugar-coated. And I know that there is a lot of hard work that goes into it that, I, I understand that. But if there's ever something that's really like, yeah, this is not working and we're pushing it, we've tried to make it work, like we, it's as important for us to know that as it is to know what is working. Because I don't want you guys to feel like there's pressure from us to make something work that's just not. So I just, that was more of a food for thought, uh, statement for.
Well, I appreciate that, and I, I, I don't want to respond, but I act as my nature. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I can't help myself. I just, it goes back to what I said before. It is, Dr. Sees developed a culture where we could have honest conversations, where it's like, you know, we do have, we do rumble a little bit. And if it's not working, hey, why are we still doing this? And that's, that, that's a real conversation, you know? And I think, as I said before, that we have a great team, honesty amongst us, and that's how the work moves.
It's like taking your shoes off at the airport.
Which don't really have to do that much.
It's, it's not a question, it's a comment. Um, because big picture year two, Washington Irving is, is my building, and so I spend a lot of time there. I also happen to be a mentor for, for some of our kiddos with their internships. We have the evidence that big picture works, right? So like, we can say, oh, look, big picture's in year two. I, I real life get to see it all the time, not just with the kids, but interacting with the staff. And Sarah's freaking amazing. Um, I'm glad they're going to have more space because they need it. Um, if, if anything, to your point, us creating all of these different access points and avenues towards success is proof that we've added more that was needed. So I appreciate you saying, I don't think there's anything we can take away right now. Because what I've watched happen is, yeah, we added more stuff because we needed more stuff. Um, although we do have some things that are brand new, like freshman academy. Can't wait to see how that goes because we don't have any evidence yet. So, you know, hold tight. I'm just saying, it's like, it's not there yet.
I do have another question. This is kind of a devil's advocate type of question. So, um, we are such a large system. We have so many staff members, particularly teachers. How does a lot of this information flow to them? Because I hear you talking about the communication, and I know we have professional development and things like that, but are those intentional conversations also having, happening with teachers? Are they aware, because I, full disclosure, I know there are many educators that don't even know that we have these programs. So my wonder is, how are we communicating a lot of this stuff to the rest of the staff? And if you can't answer now, that's okay too.
Well, I'll give a comment. That's one thing that we could all do better on is communication, you know? We do get feedback, and sometimes you could think that I did say that or we did communicate that. But you know, our job, if you don't know, you don't know. We can't fault someone for that, and that's just, yeah, that's true. And I think that's, I think Karen does a great job of, um, of broadcasting what we do as a district in the buildings. But I think myself and Tia, right? Our job is really to ensure that building leaders have this information and really just progress one, I don't care how that's trickling down to their staff. Because the worst thing in the world, if someone says, uh, freshman academy, I didn't know that was happening, right? That's terrible. We've been talking about it for three years. So it's really just us being reflective of what we need to do better. And Karen does a stunning job of, myself and Tia, we're the ones who are connected directly to the leaders, and what could we do internally different to get that message across?
Thank you for reflecting, and I think even as a board, our role too is when we are in the community to speak about all the wonderful things that we do, however, the different programs that we have. But thank you for being honest and reflective.
Way to put me on the spot, guys.
Well, I do want to reiterate, we do have representatives of every, representatives of every division coming. So you will hear from communications, you will, do, do, just point of like a procedure. Do you want to do questions after every slide? Because we will be pressed to do at the end.
Not every slide, maybe every, every person.
Every person.
I think it's one person per slide. Oh, well, we.
We did.
Not every slide, my question.
It's you.
Donna, who's aged quite a bit while we had the other discussion.
Just to share with the team. I think supporting one another, you know, because there's overlap in some of the questions that are asked to make sure that we support each other as well as the questions that are here.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Um, so as the other departments have done, we have also divided our highlights up by the different pillars. And so to start with the student and graduate success pillar, we have a, had a consistent restorative practice team, 16 in total this year, that they are highly committed to the work around this pillar. And we're adding several positions in the coming year in response to feedback that buildings want more equitable access across the district. The RP team, restorative practice team, facilitate athletic workshops for student athletes, supported my brother's keeper, boys and girls stay out, ran circle updates at the high school. They partnered with the attendance team on attendance circles and support the work of the diversion team. We have been embedding our RP specialists in the MTSS work district-wide by having them participate as members of the PBIS team, Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports. And some have joined their building trauma-sensitive schools teams. And some have joined their building trauma-sensitive schools teams, where they will be attending the TSS Institute next week. RP and, um, RP specialists and student and attendance engagement specialists have had joint professional learning communities to calibrate their work in supporting students. We have had, we have continued to work on the alignment and procedures and practices around MTSS across the district, and this includes the inconsistent data protocols and meetings, the intervention plans and response protocols, implementation of social-emotional learning curriculum, and the attendance intervention guide. And this will continue to be a major focus for us in the coming school year. We have worked closely with contractors from the New York State Education Department to provide professional development on specially-designed instruction for teachers and administrators. We have also collaborated with teaching and learning on doing instructional walkthroughs and reviewing trends to drive professional development. The School Counseling Department has coordinated college and career weeks at all grade levels. We've also collaborated with the Office of Teaching and Learning on ways to support families and students around the importance of career and technical education pathways. Counselors have run Tier Two social-emotional groups at elementary and middle school levels. At the high school level, we ran our first annual transition night for students and families around transitioning into post-secondary. In the area of workforce development, we've worked in partnership with the Schenectady Accounting Job Training Agency, or SJTA, and the IPE Department to support internships, and had many of our students hired into the city's summer recreational program. SJTA counselors supported students in writing resumes and interviewing with city officials. Under the Passionate People pillar, we've had several, um, we've offered several paid trainings to staff on a variety of topics. We've offered this through Schenectady Learns, which is the district's professional development page. We also have offered cross-departmental training to support students. For example, our McKenna Venta Liaison's trained our restorative practice specialists around how to support students that are experiencing temporary housing. Our nurse manager trained our attendance and engagement specialists around medical and mental health tutoring, so they could understand how to better support students. We are relaunching the work around trauma-sensitive schools throughout the district. This spring, we reestablished our TSS, or Trauma-Sensitive Schools District Core Team, which includes staff in various departments and buildings. And all buildings have now chosen staff members, key people, who will be their building team that will help with implementing trauma-inform practices. They will all be attending our annual, or our newly-annual, it says since COVID, TSS Institute, which is happening next, on Wednesday and Thursday, the sixteenth and the seventeenth. Under partnerships with family and community, our special education PTO, or SEPTO, continues to be better established and attended. They've had several sessions on a variety of topics for families around special education, along with continued work to improve the special education website page, which is a resource for families. Our special education department leaders attended training called Positive Solutions for Families with a regional partnership, and they were able to come back and turnkey a lot of these trainings. We'll be offering more trainings in the coming school year. And then, finally, under the Efficient Systems and Equitable Resource pillar, we continue our partnership with Behavioral Health Center, Hometown Health Center, and Gaggle Virtual Therapy. This year, we also partnered with Cartwheel Virtual Therapy for our community schools, and overall, we are seeing an increase in referrals to our virtual therapy platforms. In November, we hired our substance abuse counselor, Amber Stevens. She hit the ground running. She immediately started supporting students. She started to run psychoeducation groups, run circles. She participated in Girls Day Out, athletic workshops. And then, as you know, the district became an approved opioid overdose prevention program. Did I say that? Five times less. And is now able to train and administer Narcan. Nora K. Pan, our nurse manager, since we started, have trained numerous staff across the district, including safety, attendance, PE, teachers, coaches. And then the Office of Student Support Services also works in close collaboration with the Office of School Climate and Safety to ensure alignment in the code of character on professional development areas such as TCIS, and to assure effective communication and support services for students, such as through our handle of care form and our diversion process. And now I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent and Human Resources, Shannon Koppa. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, I always bring my team with me, because in our office at Office of Human Resources, we are truly a team. And I think it's important to, this is Mary Ann Myers. She is someone we hired this year, she's our Recruitment and Retention Specialist, dedicated to the work of recruiting and retaining our staff. And Caitlin Bucy, who is the Assistant Director, she never, some people never get to meet her, but she is a lot of the brains behind the whole system in HR, if anyone knows. So I just wanted to introduce them as well. It's actually an honor to stand here tonight to highlight the incredible work and achievements of our office. At Schenectady City School District, as you know, we're guided by the powerful vision to be a continually improving district dedicated to excellence in teaching and learning. And our office plays a vital role in bringing this vision to life. Over the past three years, we have made meaningful strides to strengthen our workforce, enhance our systems, and most importantly, support the students and staff who are the heart of our schools. So for student and graduate success, it's super important that we have the most qualified and talented teachers and instructional staff and support staff before our students. That's how we're gonna get this district to rise, and that's where our student and graduate success is gonna really shine. So, um, I, that's why we hired Mary Ann this year, to be, um, we've had her for nine months. She's been instrumental in improving the work and really dedicating our focus to recruitment and retention. We have attended over sixty recruitment events just this year alone. From the month of March to June, almost every day, we are at a recruitment event. Someone in my office is at a recruitment event. Our office has also recently started district-wide, we have monthly district recruitment events. It's never happened since I've been here. But we hire people on the spot, right here in the office, and I just grab somebody to interview them if they decide they wanna be a cleaner or security staff. So we're hiring on the spot from our own community on a monthly basis. Our office has this year also applied for and received teacher residency grants, TAC Two grants, and Teachers of Tomorrow grants, to provide monetary incentives to help improve recruitment efforts in our district. We are also currently exploring an apprenticeship program with the New York State Department of Labor to train our existing O&amp;M staff to become future electricians, HVAC experts, and plumbers. HR has also partnered closely with district leadership to ensure new hires are supported from onboarding through their career journey with us. This is something we're currently working on, and we have been for the past year. We've streamlined induction processes, created new orientation trainings that we've never had before. Last year was the first time we had orientation training programs for every employee group. We established new mentorship programs for secretaries, administrators, administrators, and paraprofessionals in the last three years. This is all part of our commitment, not just to hire staff, but to retain and elevate excellent educators and staff. Over the, under Passionate People, over the past three years, the Human Resources Department has also been deeply committed to retaining our amazing staff. So this year alone, Mary Ann has established the Bowling League, a district-wide cook-off. We've done a walking club this spring and summer. We also had a wellness fair in which we had over seventy-five vendors attend, which was so impressive if anyone was able to make it. We have expanded our Patriot Leadership Academy to include not only leadership or, um, to include like all our employee groups, to enhance, and we've also enhanced benefits such as life and disability insurance, gym memberships, the Wellness 360 Plan. We also have a diabetes management plan for our employees. So we're trying to expand our wellness and other benefits for our employees as well. We established new employee recognition programs over the last three years, and we'll be continuing to add more. And service awards to honor and dedicate to or recognize our staff that go the extra mile or who have been here for a number of years. We've also created professional learning opportunities for all staff, not just instructional staff, but all of our employee groups. So at our superintendent conference days, and throughout the year, we have professional learning, you know, opportunities for our O&amp;M staff, which I wanna thank James Spooner and Jason Graff. They've done a wonderful job trying to reach out to Hilliard and other outside vendors to help support professional learning opportunities for our O&amp;M staff. Jeff Russo's done an amazing job helping me get things established for our security and safety team members. Leah Cadley, Dr. Leah Cadley, for our family, um, for the Office of Innovation and Equity. So we have professional learning opportunities going on across the district for everyone now. We are also members of the National Teacher Working Group to stay connected with national best practices on recruitment and retention. Under partnerships with families and community, we've entered into formal memorandums of understanding with multiple higher education institutions in the area, including Siena, SUNY Empire, Manhattanville, Molloy, College Grand Canyon University, both local and external. We have SUNY Plasberg, SUNY Albany, Kiwi Hunter. So I have formal memorandums of understanding with several higher education institutions. They will help me put our own staff into programs in those institutions and help me set up any, like, the wave application for APs for me, or help with scholarship opportunities if they can find them. So we've really been expanding our outreach with higher education institutions across the state. We have established a new educator-rising program in our high school. This was the first year of our educator-rising program. We had seven students this year in the program. Those are high school students who wanna be future educators. It was amazing, because I had the opportunity to go in to see the program running. And they were showing, one, the day I was there, they were taking everyone. Jocelyn Hoffman is in charge of, is the AP in charge of that, um, program, and she took the students around to show them different classroom environments, and how they set them up, and how you can get students engaged in the classroom. So they're learning a lot of different things about how to be, you know, what education looks like, what it would be like to be a future teacher. So it's an exciting opportunity for our own high school students. And this year, we're hoping to double that amount, um, in the program. We have worked with community partners like Neil Curry to roll out the Teach Brother Teach program this year, which provides monetary incentives. And we have three or four different individuals, employees, that are enrolled in this, which provide monetary incentives for black men who wanna become future teachers to cultivate future educators within our own community. We have, in, under Efficient Systems and Equitable Resources, we will be rolling out in September a new professional learning platform. We used to have something called Staff Track, which was used to track our professional development hours for our employees. We're gonna be rolling out something called Frontline, um, which to all of our staff, which will be, it's much better about, you can, it has, it shows you different professional development opportunities and catalogs from different organizations where people can pull professional development opportunities from Capital Region, Bosie's, Questar, and a number of other professional learning options other than our own in Schenectady Learns. So this will be a good resource for our employees, and it easily tracks the professional learning opportunities. Our office has also created evaluation tools, which were not in place, what, three years ago? Not all of our staff were evaluated, our instructional staff was, but not our non-instructional staff. So every instructional staff has an evaluation tool now that they use, and it's in school front, and it's electronic, where employees can be evaluated and get feedback every year. So that's exciting. We've updated our tenure process for our employees, which, that happened this year as well, to provide transparency and feedback along the tenure track process. So that was an exciting thing that we implemented this year. And you can already see its benefits, even after our first meetings with principals, going through, looking at our tenure track candidates here, one, two, three, and four, seeing where they are, what supports we can provide them to make sure they're effective in their future years in Schenectady. So we're really proud of that work as well. The HR team publishes a monthly newsletter, and now maintains an updated user-friendly HR website as well, that we're continuously updating. Additionally, the department has started welcoming our new employees through communication. So now people can see, we notify all employees of, all of our new employees, they can see their pictures, what they're doing, trying to connect our new employees to our overall staff. So behind the scenes, we've also been hard at work improving our HR systems, refining workflows, and enhancing responsiveness across our departments. And these achievements are obviously not just the work of me, but I have an amazing team. I have ten people, and ten people with two thousand employees, but they are the most amazing team. I will say that I think a lot of people would agree that we have one of the best offices in the entire district. They are beautiful people, and they work very hard. And really what I would say is that my proudest accomplishment is that I think my team truly cares about people. And when people come in my office, I feel like we try our best to help the person, and then try to, um, you know, be part, just make sure that they feel welcome in Schenectady. So it's an exciting thing. So the Human Resources Department is proud to be part of the journey of Dr. Carlos Coto. He's a wonderful leader, and we're proud to help support him. And we look forward to building an even stronger, more inclusive, and more dynamic workforce in the years ahead.
Thank you, thank you.
Any questions for us?
Nope, we're gonna have one more presentation, and then we'll ask questions.
Okay, perfect.
You know, payday's coming up.
Phil Terry, Emma, you know, Terry Breen.
You're talking about favorite, when you start talking about favorite, you know, department. I'm just saying, it's payday's coming up.
Terry Breen, everybody.
Yes. For those of you who I've not met yet, I am Terry Breen. I'm the Assistant School Business Official. I know usually you guys get Terry up here. Myself and Katie Deviner-Treasure like to think we're the ones behind the curtain, that, you know, hopefully make things happen. You'll notice that we, of course, did not follow the same pattern that everybody else had been. So we're gonna go a different way now. That'd be us to do it that way. But obviously, business office, I was gonna just say, we handle money, and I can sit down, but... Terry was like, don't. So, we, uh, obviously, we're, we're in charge of the finances for the district. You know, we, we overlook all of the taxpayer dollars, the, the federal funding that comes in, and, and all the public funds. And we've done our best to make sure that we're really transparent in what we're getting in, what we're going out, and what we're doing with the money. And we also, of course, make sure that it's handled efficiently to meet the goals and the pillars of the district. We have systems in place for oversight. It's very important, obviously, in the business office, to have checks and balances. And what we have to look out for is slightly different challenges than the other part. We're kind of, I said, we're, we're more like the people behind the curtain as well in our department, you know? We have a tendency to, to know what's going on around us, and making sure that we can help everybody, but still maintain the, the effective spending of our money. We've had some great success, obviously. We passed our budget, which is fantastic. Those checks and balances and those systems we were talking about, we show that with our clean audits, that they're in place and they're doing well. And we've actually been especially lucky with our funding lately, that we're able to have efficient fund management by, by filling our reserves. So, you know, we, we definitely have, I know many of you heard about the trouble that other districts had with their budgets, and we're very fortunate, again, to, to, to be able to get, stay caught up in the foundation. As far as our operational efficiencies, so, I said we're behind the scenes. Some of the stuff that you think about in education, like transportation and school lunch, are always just there. You don't think of them as departments, you don't think that, oh, yeah, they, they... We oversee that. You know, we also oversee the thirty-million-dollar grant that we get every year. We pay people. And we pay the bills.
Some people.
Some people. I don't know what happened. I'll ask Mena first. Well, you know, we, we actually are very fortunate. Our, our crew in the business office has done a wonderful job. I've been in the business office for about some years, and I gotta say that I feel more confident in how we've been running, how things have been going, than we have, I mean, we have our positions filled with people that are really qualified, people that really care, they wanna make sure they get everything done and done well. And one of the big things is that we also oversee purchasing. Sometimes referred to as the fund police. Because we have fantastic staff, and, and in fact, they come up with great ideas that we have to tell them no. Because either it doesn't match the laws that we say we use our money for, or it's a liability. So we think they're great ideas, but we compliment them. We just say, you can't do that. But we've actually worked really hard getting our APs out, which are requests for proposals and bids. That's something that has changed drastically. We, you know, in the past, have been the cash cow for some of the, of our businesses around here, because we kept renewing contracts. We're, Darla Galata, the purchasing agent, is really careful to make sure that we're following five years, that we're going up to bid for stuff to make sure we get the, the best price, and can be as efficient with our money as possible. So overall, we're very happy with how it's been, and we're thrilled to be working with Dr. Coto.
Thank you.
Are we stopping?
No, we're going to, yes, we're going to, if anyone has any questions, any board members, for either Ms. Fowler, Ms. Apple, or Ms. Green? Any questions?
I could ask, what is it going right? That's a question, that's a question that I, that I picked up on. I, I have to explain myself from, from sitting on the Bosie's Board, because that's one way that they've approached in their annual review. There are one or two people there who were specifically geared to asking, well, what is it going right? You're telling us all the things that are fine, what isn't going right? That is the question. I asked that at Tyrone, I'm not asking anybody specifically, but if there's something, somebody wants, Shannon's standing up, you know?
Do you wanna come up, Shannon?
I would say there's like just a couple of things that I would say that we, like, we're looking for creative ways to solve. I think one of our biggest challenges last year was attendance across the district, whether it be teacher attendance, paraprofessional attendance. And the hard part is, we don't have, it's hard to find substitutes to go in to fill those gaps, because there are so many gaps. So if you, even if you have, say you have five teachers out on a given...
because there are so many gaps. So if you, even if you have, say you have five teachers out on a given day in a building, that's significant. You don't have five subs ready to roll in there, so we're having to pay other teachers to do that sixth, to do another class coverage or not take their planning period and, you know, cover, or things like that, or paraprofessionals, the same thing. Even though we hired this year 20% more paraprofessionals than we had in the prior year, that's a true statement. We hired 20% more paraprofessionals, but yet there's gaps in every building everywhere in that role. And so we're trying to figure out how, and we have a subpar list, so we have a paraprofessional list with a list of substitute paras that are ready to step in and fill those gaps. But even with that, we still have shortages in buildings where there's no, nobody to cover, and that's a problem. And so we're trying to figure out how to resolve these, you know, or try to figure out another solution. I mean, we're lucky. We have 400, almost 400 paras, 400 paraprofessionals, and we have a sublist with at least 40 subparas on it. But yet, we still can't fill the gaps on those days. So we're looking at different accountability measures or ways to improve those, and so if the board has any ideas, let me know. And then the other thing I would say that is probably a challenge is really those shortage areas. We're doing amazing hiring. I can fill all of our common, I have a waiting list for common branch teachers. I can fill most of our positions in our district, but the ones that I can't, math, we're down three math, I think, three math teachers today. But like, those are the shortage areas, and nobody can find them. And we're, districts are stealing each other's teachers. So it's like we need some help from the state, I think, on the certification standards for math, science, CTE, and foreign language. Those are the four areas that I would say. But those are the things that I would really stress for me are the weaknesses.
I have a question too.
When you're done.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Did we, I thought we passed a resolution that allowed you to hire like uncertified?
Yes.
Has that helped?
Yes, that has helped tremendously, and I think, I know Michael's saying it has helped. They are SFT members now. And so now they're, we are, easily can help, help fill some of those long-term substitute roles, where we had people that were, you know, just filling in gaps. Now we can hire, like, if somebody's on maternity leave or something like that, or we can't hire somebody at the beginning of the year, and somebody speaks Spanish, we can get that uncertified teacher in there. So it's really been helping us particularly in the foreign language area, and in math as well. I mean, in science, you know, Trevor and Mike have also hired a couple of our uncertified folks as well. So yes, that's been a huge help. Also, thank you.
I do want to preface my question before I ask it.
Yes.
Because I know that across the country, there is, there are some concerns and challenges with educators and their morale, their well-being, self-care, the whole nine. So I know this is not just Schenectady, but when you talked about attendance, there is a, and I know you know this, there's a correlation with attendance and morale, right? And you also shared, and I've been to many of the events that you talked about, there are many things that we're doing in Schenectady to really hone in on self-care and morale. My question to you, and it might be very premature, because morale takes many years, especially since many districts, not just Schenectady, has gone through a lot, and COVID did not help, and all the things that come with that. But my wonder is, and it could be rhetorical, you don't have to answer now, like, what are we strategically and intentionally doing to uplift morale? And I know that's very subjective, and it depends on the building. It depends on the culture of that building. But again, it could be rhetorical, and the reason I'm asking this is because, and I'm being honest, I have heard in some of the buildings that morale is the longest problem. And I'm not, it's not anyone to blame, right? But I'm just wondering, and again, you don't have to answer this now, but it's just kind of, my wonder is, what are we doing to intentionally address those concerns in individual buildings where that may be a heightened issue? And again, I thank you for everything you're doing, because I know you're doing a lot around morale. But then, as you know, and I know I'm speaking to the choir, each building has its own culture and its own challenges.
So I would say we're doing a lot regarding teacher retention and instruction, retention of any, all of our employees. As I mentioned, there are some things that are done at the district level, where we're trying to build camaraderie across the district with like the wellness fair, and the, and the walking club, and the bowling club, and trying to bond people within. But as you said, with the individual building level issues. So, you know, outside my head, I can think of a couple of buildings where the morale is less than other buildings, and it is very building-specific. You know, sometimes, I mean, we will, we can do everything we can at the district level to try to help, but I'm not in the building every single day, and it takes, and it's a hard, hard thing, because some of it is community-based, some of it is building-based, and it takes strong, like, leaders in those buildings and staff to really help overcome those morale issues sometimes. And so what we've done is tried to provide professional development opportunities to our administrators, specifically on school climate culture. We've intentionally, even recently, sent a third party into two different buildings to try to help their entire administrative team to try to figure out creative ways to help with school culture. So we are trying things. It's something, you know, this isn't an easy switch of a button either. You know, our school climate surveys, they tell you some story, but they don't tell you necessarily how to fix it. And you can see there's national research out there that suggests that right now in education, it is, burnout is incredible. It is, people are fleeing the education field, whether it be administration, instruction, teaching, because it's just, there's so many stressors. You know, we have, one of the hardest things that, you know, we hear about is student behaviors. Student behaviors are one of the biggest challenges for our staff right now. And I mean, they get, we have workplace violence reports, where some of our staff are getting hurt, you know, with students in the, with, in certain classrooms. So there's a lot of contributing factors that we're trying to address, to try to help with some of the challenges that they're telling us that they're facing. But it is gonna take time, and it's not overnight, and we're gonna need everyone to help. We need everyone's help and support in this stuff. Because it's not just, you know, it's one person or a team of 10 people, and the district office is not gonna improve the culture amongst Schenectady. It's gonna take every school, building leader, every person in that building to help and want to make it happen and help support the building. And, you know, if there are specific things you think we could do to help, or you're hearing that we could do to help, I mean, my office is always listening. I, you know, we wanna help, that's any, in any way we possibly can, but we are gonna need help from the entire district on this, because I do think it's a challenge, and it's not just Schenectady, it's everywhere, as you said, it's, there's national research on it that shows you that, like, one in every three administrators is leaving. It's troubling, actually. Thank you.
Yes. Board member, Jamaica?
A bit of a follow-up to what Brittany said, and for both you and Tyrone. Are any of the current systems and structures, like the tracking and stuff, something that could be used in a way to kind of red flag in some way if there's a morale issue with a particular individual, right? So if there's all of these different systems of checking in for tenure and checking this and that and everything else, is there something that either already could be indicative to the system that exists or that could be added on in a way to kind of be like, did you ask how they feel? I'm being super simple about it, right? But is there something that we already have that can help with identifying? Because part of it is, do you know who's angry in your building? That's not an anonymous survey, right? Like, just looking, wondering that. And then, not directly tied to it, but also along the lines, when we're talking about the climate and culture and concerns about our children, have all of our staff received de-escalation training, and if so, by who and what has that looked like, and if not, why not? Two-fold, because it is, is a wonderful tool for individuals to be able to self-identify how they address a situation, and then also to treat our children in a way that doesn't escalate them, and that actually removes that threat that some of them may be concerned with. So, yep, those things.
So it's a loaded question, but we, some of the things are, we have exit surveys, which tells a lot.
Right.
I can tell, I can tell you where the hot button schools are right now, from who comes into my office. I, you know, I know the two, three buildings where we're getting all the complaints. You know, you do, right? Exactly. I'm sure, you know, and so those are where we're trying to intentionally focus our efforts. I mean, Tyrone and I are constantly talking to building leaders, we're constantly, we know where the hot button issues are, providing training. We, this year, we've worked with Dr. Coto to really try to provide strategic training to folks where we think it's needed on the instructional team side. And as far as your question regarding de-escalation techniques, it's part of the mandatory training every year. I mean, some people, like, that can, that's hard, because it's virtual, and people, some people pay attention, and some people don't.
It's a virtual de-escalation?
Yes, but we also do, we are also strongly encouraging TCIS training for almost all of our staff members at this point, and even providing stipends and monetary incentives to get them through the training program. So we are.
But that's only one time.
And refresher training.
Okay.
But you're right, there's more that we, that is an area where I think we could do more, and really trying to, I mean, we are doing a lot already, but it's an area where continuous training is, and MTSS supports is probably where we're gonna see the biggest help in that area.
And I would share, I mean, this is a real priority for us as a district. I think even coming in, the culture and climate with things that were shared. So we're modeling it at district office, and just recently with the SAA retreat, we did some work around self-care. And, you know, I share a lot, Jamaica, to your point around, how are you doing? How are we doing?
Yeah.
So it's a model that I've shared with our ELT, but then I've also shared with building leaders to almost recalibrate the start of a year, to connect with those in which you lead, just to kind of get a sense of where that, where you are, where your, you know, the individual that you lead is, as far as their own kind of state, and kind of getting to a place where we can build that level of comfort. And I talk a lot to my team just around being vulnerable as leaders, to take in information, but creating that space so that our staff feel comfortable sharing. And that's what I've been doing a lot of just this year, a lot of listening and learning, and kind of trying to build upon this way in which we can all, especially at the district office, but work our way down, so that even with teachers, that there's a level of comfort in being uncomfortable, just knowing that we've gotta take in the information based on how people, what people are experiencing. I think the restorative practice piece, I mean, there's a lot of elements that we're trying, and they've been hungry to kind of come in and do a lot of the de-escalation. The online stuff is not, we need the hands-on, we need to have it in-person, so that, you know, there's that real kind of interaction that can help you process. But that is the work. I mean, it's gonna be a huge priority as we go in. We have had third parties come in to do some support and looking to actually take, based on the feedback that we've received from those that have been part of it. And this has been an administrative group, it's also been staff, very successful as it relates to what they're experiencing. So looking to see how we just model that across all buildings, because we're, should be restorative in everything that we do, and we should, and that's what our sort of practice sometimes says, specialists. We're modeling this, and we need help, so we wanna prioritize it as a district, so that we're living it.
And that's one of the things we're training the administrators on in August, is restorative practices, so that they can help our employees and support our employees too, when they're having conflicts among each other, or there might be an issue that they can address to try to, within their own building, to improve the culture immediately, rather than waiting for it to come to HR or something else to happen. So we are trying to do everything we possibly can. If the board has other ideas, like, honestly, I'm always willing to listen, and we will help. We wanna support our staff in the best way possible. So if there are other things you think of, please let me know, and we will try to do our best to try to implement them.
And I appreciate that you are saying that, that you, I will share this as someone who sees a lot of emails from staff, from administrators, from, I'll keep it to those two, and even students. But also prior, when we were looking for this, for superintendent, hiring a superintendent, we got a lot of emails. And one of the things that I will say is a trend with all of the above, even the surveys that we have sent out, and I know I'm making it simplistic, but this is what I see. People wanna be seen, and people wanna be heard.
That's true.
Those are the two things that resonate with all the emails, pretty much, that we have seen. So I just share that with you from the board side, from what I see and what we hear.
Yep, and I think that's true from what we hear as well. And that's a hard thing, you know, because sometimes I think even at their building level, there, like, there's, you know, it's hard. And I understand that from our principal and AP, some buildings only have two administrators in charge. And trying to hear everybody's concerns and listen to every, it's, when you have 50, you know, 40 or 50 employees in the building, that, it is difficult. So sometimes they just go right to us, or they'll go to somebody else because they don't get what they need from the building level. And that just exacerbates the problem by the time it gets higher, you know what I mean? So we are trying to figure out ways to help, you know, them delegate, even this, even this, our recent SAA retreat, we talked about to administrators about delegating responsibilities and things like that among other people, so that we can have these hi, how are you conversations, and those, you know, talks with our employees that might help support the culture too, and thank you.
Board member?
One of the hurdles, and I'm not sure where it fits in our conversation tonight, but that I anticipate in the next six weeks, and that is our cell phone policy, the fact that they're going to be in bags, parents are gonna wanna get a hold of their children. You know, we tell them to contact the school. Have we done anything in the way of communication and instruction to how, of how offices will respond within each individual school?
Mr. Millie will come up with that.
So Karen, good support. We're working on that. One thing, we're gonna add additional lines to the buildings, but it's really just.
No, I was looking at Karen's face.
No, like I said before, this goes back to my original point of communication. This is just another level where we have to over-communicate. I'll give Karen credit, we've been saturating the community with communication, but we have to. No, we have to. And so this is just another step, you know, it's, we're fortunate enough that we have seasoned leaders in spaces where we can make this work, and we don't expect this to be an easy task. But the hardest piece, it's not the pouching, it's not the device, it's communicating to make sure everybody knows what that expectation is. And that's, that's, that's gonna be the hardest piece.
It wasn't, it wasn't about the process, it's how will the, the parents, guardians, whomever, get a hold of a child if they want to, or get a message to them, or that kind of thing. I mean, you know, they're limited, limited number of people within an office. They can't just run down the hall to get, you know, Mary Smith or whatever to, I mean, how is, how is this gonna work physically within the building space?
My best answer without being in the committee with us, right, and have the principals, it's all on hands on deck. If we're gonna make this work, it has to be. We did visit Newburgh, we did visit Troy, and they said, if a parent called, that phone must be answered. If a student needs the phone, they gotta be able to use the phone, and say, and that has to happen. It has to happen.
And that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so that, I mean, so it's, and I wanna leverage our leaders, the tasks they have at hand. And I could sit here and say we're doing X, Y, and Z, but I could be Mr. Green with a large staff, I could be Mr. Farina, I could be Mr. DeFazier, I could be any of them, and the message is, this has to happen. Phones cannot go unanswered, this is, I told you.
And to Kathy's point, and for Karen, because I have seen all of the text messages and emails and social media posts, but they all have very similar headings, and I stopped reading them. And so if we're communicating that, hey, you're gonna be able to reach your kid when you need to, change the heading, or we're gonna stop reading. The, like, make it be specific to Kathy's point, because it's, it's, it's super important to all of us. Communicating with your child next school year. Like, let that be the header, instead of, you know, so that we know it, this is the specific thing we're, we're talking about as it relates to the cell phone policy, but this, this particular piece, because, yeah, I stopped, I stopped reading.
If I may.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
If I may, working with, sorry, I was gonna say Tyrone, but Mr. Millie. With regard to the cell phone committee, like, this has been a very, very, very big piece of that conversation. So we know that, hands down, like, we have to communicate to the community how they're going to, like, what does that look like? So I know, I think, you know, Tyrone just said, we are looking into additional lines and so on and so forth, but I don't wanna step on any toes, like, the communication is definitely going to happen. I can't speak to when, because I'm not in the, in the, in the weeds there, but that was a very, very big component, because it's very important, and communication only started, what, like, a week and a half, two weeks, I don't know.
Last week is school.
The last week is school.
I was thinking of, from Shannon's standpoint, the personnel side of things, you know, in terms of, in terms of, are the, are the administrative assistants going to feel overrun? Are they going to feel, you know, how are we prepared to deal with that stress?
So from the two models we saw with Newburgh and Troy, they made it happen, they made it work. And I'm a believer, if they can make it work, I'm not gonna say, we have to make it work, you know? If they can make it work, we have to make it work, just based on the two models that we saw. We saw it district other sides, we saw it in half other sides, and the dynamics of the community are pretty much the same, so that's, that's my.
And it wasn't that long ago that cell phones, that students just didn't have cell phones. And it was, I know that processes have probably, or change, general, like, job duties have probably changed, but it is basically as simple as having one, like, a phone number for parents to call, and then having like a rolling calling system. So if the, the number that the call defaults to doesn't answer, then it bounces to someone else, and then to someone else, so it might take. Yeah, like phone tree. And in terms of having students being able to call their parents, every classroom has a phone anyways. And even as far back as when I was in high school, it was as simple as saying, hey, I need to call my mom, can I use the phone? Yeah, sure, no problem, and they let me use their phone. So I think that there's a little bit of fear, because it is a change, and we, all, all of us are so used to just picking up our cell phones and being able to have that instant contact. You know, I, I think that people are gonna be a little bit more selective over what they need to talk to their parents or their, or their kids about. I don't foresee it as being like everyone on the phone all day long. or their, or their kids about. I don't foresee it as being like everyone on the phone all day long trying to, to reach their student. It's just going to be a little bit of a learning curve. I'm confident that it's going to be fine. There's phones in every single classroom. It's not like all communication to the outside world is not available. So yes, we need to fine-tune it before the beginning of the school year, but I just, I'm, I'm personally am not as worried about it. Since back in 2010, when I was in high school, or 2006, when I was in high school. It was just like the beginning of self, students having cell phones, so, and that, we were okay. Uh, but I do have a question.
Yes.
For Shannon maybe, or I don't know, for whoever, who knows the answer. Is there a better ratio that we should be looking at in terms of like staff and admins and so that, because Shannon, you had mentioned that, you know, some of the schools, there's like two, there's a principal and a vice principal, it's just not enough for people to go to if they need help. Is that something we should be looking at, like hiring additional people, like not just filling vacancies, but actually creating more of these leadership roles for people to go to?
I mean, I think that's a good, a good point. I mean, I think some of our administrators, our administrators are some of the, we have some of the best administrators. I feel like in Schenectady that I've ever seen. We're so fortunate, you know, they are running, if you've watched them in a building in a given day. I had a sub in as principal in one or two buildings this year, and watching what they do on a daily basis is exhausting. And you're trying to manage so many emergencies on the fly and at the same time deal, like strategically think about how to improve their building. I mean, I have to say, I don't know anybody who's that much of a saint. I mean, Dennis works, is an example of the high school. He works seven to seven, you know, he doesn't leave the building. So I think, you know, you're, you're raising a good point in that, you know, do we have enough administrative support and help at the building level to really make the changes that we need? And maybe, you know, it's always good to look at staffing levels and really, you know, deep dive into this. I mean, it's something I would definitely want to ask our, our own administrative staff to see, like, do you need additional supports? If so, what would they be? We try to do that in our staffing meetings every year. You know, I, I would say two seems like a lot, but it, when you're actually in the buildings, I mean, it's, it, when school's in session, they're just trying to put out fires all day long.
You know, she.
And I would even encourage it to be from your point of view too, because you're looking at it more objectively and, you know, sometimes you can be like, hey, do you need help? And you're like, no, I got it. But no, he really needs help, you know, he can't do it on his own. So it might even be more of, you know, like a, a higher up leadership decision to say, listen, like, we see this stuff happening all the time, we know, you know, don't take it personal, but we're going to place another body here to help you. If not temporarily, you know, permanently, temporarily.
You raise that, but ten years ago, elementary principals had, elementary schools had an elementary principal. There was no assistant principal, there was no instructional supervisor, there was no dean. That's ten years ago. Now every elementary school has an assistant principal or an instructional supervisor, a second administrator. That was less than ten years ago, so we're right there. So I, I think it's, it's a valid point. Our high school team, yes, Dennis works incredible hours, he has a team of multiple APs, as do our middle schools, but that's grown over the past decade because we recognize the, the work cannot be done alone effectively, efficiently. Thinking of what's best for our children, but also our leaders and our faculty and our staff. So I think that that's fair to go back and ask and inspect. The same goes with some of the cell phone questions, the office staff. We've added IPS twos in every one of our buildings, so there are two secretarial clerical assistants in, in office spaces to accommodate that, but it doesn't mean we can't revisit now that we've shifted cell phone policy. That's going to change practice a little bit, that's going to change the volume of calls to the office. So to look back and inspect, that's the return on investment piece, one of the early domains we referenced at the fore for this presentation. That's where we're looking at a team to say, we've added it, can we enhance it? Do we need to do more? Maybe it's less. That, that's what we'll continue.
And we have done that, even in the last couple of years, like Mount Pleasant, we, you know, gave them another AP last, it was last year or year before. And we've done the same thing at Central Park, helping them. So there have been, where we see that someone might need additional supports, we've provided them. I guess the question is just continuously looking at that and just making sure that our administrators feel supported too, because I think it's not just our instructional, it's not just teachers, it's also our administrators are feeling burnout. And so I'm trying, you know, it's very difficult, like, I think it's a demanding profession. And I think that no one can underestimate that. We are in one of the most demanding professions that there is. Thus, I think it's even higher than nursing in some reports. So it's something we do need to do better and it's something we're constantly looking to improve. It's not, it's just not that easy. I think is what I'm trying to say, but if we have suggestions or anybody does have additional suggestions, we're obviously, you know.
I do have an eye wonder. This is many, 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 many years ago, and I know, Joe, you remember this, Deputy Superintendent, we had deans. And the dean specifically dealt with concerning behaviors. And I know the middle schools had them, I don't, I don't remember the high school, even though I was teaching in Schenectady, but we had deans that literally worked with students who made poor choices or had behavioral issues. So that the principal and assistant principals were, dealt more with, or they were more, I think, instructional leaders. And the dean, so just throwing that out there, that was years ago.
But I think it's always been to continuously look at our models and our staffing needs in every building. So I think this is something we can definitely talk about as an ELT and, you know, whether additional supports are needed in any of our buildings. Or we, you know, change titles or, or make things different to help support, because there is obviously, this is actually a huge issue that we, you know, we do need to address, and it is something that it's going to take a really deep thinking into how to help improve, you know, the, the culture and climate across the buildings.
Thank you.
Any other questions or you guys all said?
We're good with the money?
I'm good with the money.
Oh, I have a question, I have a money question, but I wasn't sure if we.
Yeah, it's Manana, Karen and Shannon.
My money question is this, that last week, I believe out of the Department of Education, federal level, they, they are, have paused payment on Title II, Twenty First Century Grants, there were a whole host, a whole host of them. I'm curious as to how much Schenectady is affected by that, how many of them there are, how much money is involved for us in that? And what do we do if we don't get paid?
We don't know yet, is part of the problem. We don't know how much they're going to hold, if they're going to hold, I mean, they could just hold it and then decide to release it. So, I mean, obviously we will be affected because we have Twenty First Century, we have Title Grants.
I recognized all of them.
Correct.
I didn't know what they totaled to though, I mean, that's what I was looking for.
And again, we, we can't say if they're going to cut part of a grant.
No, I know that, but I meant in terms of what we have in our budget.
To cover if they.
For those types of things.
We've, we would need to take a look at our spending, actually, a little more closely and, and kind of determine if we can maybe work programs together. Is there a different path we can take to get the same results? You know, it, it might, it'll be a challenge. We're very fortunate that we are right now in a good financial position. You know, we're, we're very lucky. We're not struggling right now, so we've had, and we get, we got the increase in the foundation aid.
No, I know all that, I just, you know, it, it looks like a significant amount. I don't know what the number is, but, you know.
Twenty First Century was eight hundred and forty-five thousand to just run our after-school program for this year.
Right.
So if that's gone come next year, then we need to figure out that cost just for the after-school.
I was thinking of some of the professional development that we've heard a lot about, we've heard about across the board with the number of odd patients and so forth, so.
What I'm also saying is that we've, we have done a lot with less. You know, our district has.
Oh, we have a district, I know, and I, and I hate to say going back to that, but that's what I'm asking.
But, I mean, we are very, I'm trying to say, we have money right now. You know, at least for next year, we will do fine. We may have to take a look at things a little more closely after that, but as things stand now this year, we should be able to stay pretty much.
And we're not going to know until they actually don't send the money.
Correct. That's usually how they do it.
And until we see whether or not Judge James sends another lawsuit, because God bless her.
No, I mean, it's a conversation that I've been having with Terry and we've been following it. I mean, it is early, but it's, it's what's been happening in many different facets of society, so it's just trying to, you know, plan as we can and keep what we, remain optimistic and, but also, you know, not, and also not create that change in that culture right now, because there's, there's so much of an unknown in this, but it's not to say that we're not, that we're ignoring this. We've definitely been, me with Terry every day and we follow, you know, what's been happening just to make sure that, and then we have, you know, continue to brainstorm what, what would be the options, the things that we would do to shift, but.
For example, is right at school.
I'm sorry.
Right at school, yeah. We, we've changed like our summer enrichment program to right at school. We saved money when we did that. So, you know, making, and the kid, it doesn't affect the, the students in a negative way. So we may have to think outside of the box in a year or so. Now we're good, now we're good.
Thank you. So we're going to continue with the presentations, but I am going to ask the board that if you have any questions, just to respect the time, and we do have an exact session and some people have to leave a little early. I'm going to ask the board to submit questions, if they have questions for the last three or four people who are watching the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Deggler is up. Director of Facilities.
Hello, Department of Education members.
Hello.
Everybody tonight, thank you for having me to present. I want to start out by just thanking my colleagues for the support that I get here in the district, thanking the Board of Ed, you guys support us tremendously. And most importantly, I want to thank the students of the district for driving us. They give us the drive while we're out, going about, making our tours around the district, we see it. We see them using the things that we work on and enjoying the facilities and to us that, it gives us the drive to do a little bit better and work harder each day, so. Wanted to start out with some of our sayings that we talk about in the office all the time. We always say that we're meeting the needs of today while planning for tomorrow. We're always, we're constantly trying to keep all the plates spinning and just keep everything moving. And it's, sometimes it can be a challenge, we have a fantastic office and we have a lot of great staff. Our planning and, and building a staple foundation that supports the district pillars. Not to sound any type of cocky or arrogant, but we certainly feel like without facilities, we'd build a foundation for our educational institutions. And without it, it's, you can't build without a foundation, and we truly believe that. It's a very important foundation as well. Community engagement, we provide all stakeholders with facilities that are accessible and encourage community engagement. We say we're, there are facilities that are free of facilities-related distractions, that's what we want. We want kids to have an education that is free from facilities-related distractions. We don't want to see leaking water coming through the roofs, we don't want to see cold air blowing through the windows. We want facilities that are encouraging, students want to come to. We truly believe that the graduation rate will not go up if students don't want to come to school. And for some of our students, it's the nicest place they get to go in a day, so let's really make it nice. That's, that's kind of how we feel and that is what I drive in our office. Success, modern, comfortable, visually appealing buildings designed to support student success. We believe that students in Schenectady should not get any less of an opportunity than a student in Gilderlin, Niskiuna, or Red Hook, New York, where I'm from, should get the same opportunity. Passion for Equity. We do this a lot. It is important and it's driven by our leadership team, my colleagues. Facility staff completing a sizable balance of the capital work. We, walking our buildings that are under construction, we just could not bear to see. It's, it's, it's limited by the MCA, which is the cost allowance that the state gives us to do the construction. Having some rooms completely renovated and having some not, we just couldn't see that, so. We, our guys were eager to chip in, and now every room in the first elementary school that we could not wait to kick off, well, every room will be touched. And when you walk them, they're beautiful, the floors are refinished, they're painted, and they have the very same look as some of the brand new rooms. It's, it's nice. And that was one of the things the teachers brought up, and it was great, on our tour, it was great to be able to say that, that we had that. We were about to do it. So, some of the things that we obviously, there's many, many things that facilities does, there's many things we can assist with. We maintain and operate district infrastructure, we have approximately a hundred and forty staff. One point six million square feet, goes on and on and on, a lot of big numbers. There's a lot, a lot of things to take care of, miles of sidewalk, my, guys in my office take pride in adding that up on some of their electronic devices.
They get rid of steps in, aren't they?
It is nice, it is nice, you know, some it's like eighteen miles of sidewalks and it's, it's pretty cool. Fifty-two hundred work orders we completed last year. It's a humongous amount. Everything from replacing a toilet paper dispenser to, you know, some very large items that take more than a day to complete. We have a fantastic, this is my, oof, my twenty-some year in school facilities. I came from a different career of construction before this, and I will say that the team we have, our maintenance department, is the best I've ever seen. It is hands down the best I've ever seen. We have licensed electricians, we have masons out of the unions that work on building construction. Roofers, they are very highly skilled and very self-motivated, and it is, it is a nice way to, to go out every day. We updated and relocated all of the district staff in the new offices. This building was a major project that we did in-house. Updated everything, created all the offices that exist now and moved everyone in. Up to date this year, my office personally has covered and signed off on thirty-nine million dollars worth of work out of the three hundred million dollar capital improvement project. We don't sign off on it unless we review it and know that it's done. We're there for just every step of it, actually. So it's, it is about thirty, I don't even know how many million per month, but it is quite a bit, thirty payouts a month maybe. And each one is reviewed. We coordinated and completed several building moves. We just recently purchased another building, which we were ecstatic about. Having another building to move into this summer, and it's a beautiful, beautiful structure. So we will be moving back into, I call it, I always use the acronym, but we're going to be moving back into Freshman Leadership Academy. We're also going to be moving back into Van Corleere. And now we're going to be moving into a building right up the street, so it's a lot of work. It really is a lot of work. And the work orders don't stop coming in. F fifty-two hundred isn't going to stop. That's going to continue to come in, so we find ways and means. Again, the business office has been great supporting us with our purchases and the items that we need. When I started here, we had one grounds person trying to take care of, you know, nineteen buildings. A couple lawnmowers, it was, it was an impossible task. We now have a turf manager, we have probably eight or ten grounds workers. They operate like landscaping companies, they, they leave in the morning and they head to different sites, and it's very well managed. And it's, it's great to see, you know, it really is. What I've seen, what I took part in and what I saw happen at Mal Pleasant with the, with the construction of the sports complex, it's just, it really is, whenever any of us in our office are having a bad day, we walk that complex and see, we remember what it was like before that, so. That's really about it. I mean, there's, I could go on and on. I know you guys don't want me to go on and on, but we can certainly go on and on about some stuff that a lot of people don't understand. We, we get that. We try to limit it. You know, it is completely separate to education, but it is a part of education if it makes any sense at all.
Absolutely. And we thank you, because we've done some site visits and you're there and you're walking through the building, and it's exciting to see the improvements and how our students are really going to enjoy those buildings, so we appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Of course, Van Corleere, show them.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
So I don't get to do this often, so I hope you don't mind if I talk for like an hour or something. Would never happen. Would never, never happen, trust me. Okay, so in communications, we had a very productive year. We remain committed to continuous improvement in a strong strategic communication program. We did, we were under fire a little bit at the beginning of the school year when there were some incidents and, and communication was critiqued, but I want to say we listened, we made adjustments, and we're better for it. So that was, that's really important, and I have a fantastic team, and we, we took that back and we're like, let's do better with this. And I, I truly believe that we have. This year, we increased our capacity by adding a highly skilled multimedia specialist to the communication team in December. Ryan joined our team, he hit the ground running. And I'm really proud to say that we nearly doubled our overall productivity and output, significantly expanding our ability to tell the district story. I'm incredibly proud of the volume and quality of work we've produced, covering nearly every aspect of the district. As most of you know, we post multiple times throughout every day. And I pulled some data as a sample from Facebook for twenty-eight days in June, and we had nearly one point two million views with about a hundred, a reach of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We had twenty-one thousand interactions, nearly fifteen hundred link clicks. We had three hundred and seventeen new followers in just those four weeks, and that's a lot considering our base following is over ten thousand. And that's a lot considering our base following is over 10,000. So, I was really proud, I just wanted, I just pulled a sample to share with you the, the engagement and the, the volume of audience that we have on social media. We've systematized our workflow, allowing us to work more intelligently and efficiently. This enables us to prioritize critical strategic communication plans while seamlessly still managing the daily communications. Before, we added the multimedia position. And keep in mind, there's three of us in this department. But before we added that position, it was very difficult to keep someone on the ground all the time while managing the, the crisis stuff that comes up, working on communication plans, responding. Because we provide support to the principals with communication. We, we pretty much provide support to everyone, which is why I didn't list everything under pillars, because I feel like our work supports all four of the pillars. So, we systematized our, our workflow and we're working more efficiently. And this, this enables us to be able to, to focus on communication plans and fully implement a strategic communication plan. Examples of that were the weapons detection rollout. I think that was a pretty successful communication plan. The strategic plant awareness. And right now, as you said, we're in the middle of the cell phone communication. And yes, we will have, we do have various messages planned. There's a whole, a whole series of, like, they're, they're in order. It's like to kind of penetrate, get the, get the main message out. And I just wanna make sure everything is in line before we start telling people things. I wanna make sure, 'cause once we put it out there, we can't pull it back. So, so that's one reason why there's a pause in the, the change in the messaging. I've been trying to change it up a little bit in, in the subject line, but it's, it's, it's a little tricky early on, so. But that, that, that is coming. And no, you know that's coming.
Yeah.
So, we've established and improved our processes, timeliness, attention sequencing, which is what I was just saying, transparency, especially when critical situations arise. A core focus this year was to lift our strategic plan, making it more than just a document. We aimed to connect the incredible work of our faculty and staff directly to student and graduate success. So, when we sat down to create an awareness plan, we brainstormed, how can we make this different? How can we help connect our faculty and staff and their roles to, no matter what your role is, from every position in the district to student and graduate success? How can we lead our community to see that the work we're doing in our schools, in every position, is connected to the pillars of the strategic plan? So, in December, we started the Passionate People Campaign, Teacher of the Week, the Alumni Profiles, and the Did You Know Series. And these initiatives have, they've received consistently positive feedback. And we do believe there's widespread awareness and understanding of the strategic plan across the district. We also created the posters that Dr. Kodo, those posters right there, is personally delivering to all the schools. He delivered about half of them before the school year ended. And I'm assuming he'll bring the rest after school starts. So, hopefully, when you walk into the schools, you'll be seeing the, the symbols of our, our strategic plan on the walls of all of our schools. And that's different. We've never, we've never done that before. So, that was part of our awareness campaign in connecting everybody in the schools to the pillars of the strategic plan. And our, our objective was very clear. It was to take the strategic plan off the shelf and truly bring it to life to everyone in our community. And I think there's people in our community who aren't in our schools, who, those, that 1.5 million people who see our posts know we have a strategic plan because it's out there every single day. And when we post stuff, we're connecting it to, to a pillar. And we're hashtagging it and we're, we're really trying to make the connection. And I, in, in our team, we say if we can't connect it to a pillar, we have no business putting it out there. So, that's where our work is in that. This school year, all of the communication tools and platforms have been fully integrated into all of the schools and offices. Everyone who needs access has been trained and is now equipped to utilize the tools. And this includes text messaging, phone calls, emails, app notifications, our live feed. It also includes teachers effectively using Rooms, which is our two-way communication tool between parents and teachers in the classroom. Trainings that I'm doing process with new staff continuously being on board. We work to ensure that everyone is empowered to use all the tools effectively. This year, we sent 22,416 messages. And thanks to the continued support of our technology specialists and parent liaisons, Rooms is now being widely used across the district. 5,696 classes were published. 3,600, 3,618 parents and guardians were actively engaged on Rooms. While we made significant progress, our goal for the upcoming school year is to ensure all teachers and parents are actively using Rooms. The Communications Department remains committed to, committed, committed to effectively telling our district's story, engaging our community, and directly supporting student and graduate success. And in summary, this year's been transformative for our department. We've, we've enhanced our capacity, significantly increased our output, and strategically communicated key district messages, all while deepening engagement within our community. And I also wanna add, we had a student intern from Big Pick work in our department. And he, he pretty much shadowed Justin and learned a lot from Justin. And it was a fantastic experience. I hope we can get a, a Big Pick intern back again next year because he also did a little bit of work. But that was a great experience. So, it's just another example too of how we're engaged with the students and trying to, trying to be part of that process as well.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for three people in the department, you're doing a lot of work. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Russo.
Good evening, Board. Congratulations to those that are re-elected and are president. I got it, Karen, I got it.
What's his name?
I wanna thank Dr. Kodo for the opportunity to be here tonight to kind of discuss where we've been in the last year when it comes to the Office of Climate and Safety. I'm gonna start at the bottom of my slide because I kinda wanted to piece together how the pillars are intertwined with everything that the office does for safety. Safety continues to grow in layers. Passionate People, building relationships to engage with students, families, and community. Operating equitable safety systems leading to a safe learning environment and ultimately student and graduate success. I think that four years ago, we had a survey about a potential 2030 plan. And the number one concern for everyone in the district was safety. We had a 10% rate of people feeling safe. That was what was reported at the time on our climate survey. This year's climate survey reflected 65% of people saying that they felt safe in the buildings. So, I'm not here to say like we've done it and we've, we've conquered this, but I, I definitely take pride in, in the responses that we've gotten and the drop that we've seen as far as that being a number one priority at all times. The fact that we can now kind of laser in on the graduate success is really, you know, I, I take pride in the fact that from day one, I came in here and said that it was, kids can't learn if they don't feel safe. And, and I think that we've created an environment where kids can now feel that way. And, and I know that safety is, is viewed differently by different people. But I think that our, our surveying and, and what we've done and where we've come from have really gone a long way. And while we do have morale issues and we have building issues, you know, I think that the overall upward motion of the district has really been something to celebrate. And when Kathy asks, what didn't go right? We didn't have 100% graduation rate. And, you know, I, even from the safety lens, I take that personal because until every student is successful, you know, we're not there. And, and so I, I really take that serious. To start up at the top, this year was about the weapons detection for me. It started out with our District Safety Committee a year ago as a, as an idea. A lot of feedback was taken, a lot of surveying. We went through it round and round, lots of presentations here. We had guest speakers. We had a safety fair in the fall. We definitely had some communication issues that went on early on. For my office, working with Karen, things improved immensely throughout the year. I think that the RFP process we went through to, to come up with, you know, once we had decided on a weapons detection system and to move forward with that, we went through the process, through the business office, the support of the grant funding and everything that we went through for writing the grant for the, for the COPS grant for SPPP. The, the mid-year implementation is not something that's easy to do. We basically put a new system in place in January. You know, as the news reported, we had 1,200 kids outside and it was minus six degrees, so that didn't go well that day. But I think that we quickly learned from that. We were able to pivot and, and, you know, once we rolled this out into element, or into middle schools, we were able to do it in a matter of a day or two when it came to the middle school. So, we, we learned quickly. We implemented this in a matter of about two months. And we went from a point of, you know, a newsworthy story because we just didn't do it right on the first day, to where I've had at least two dozen schools come and view our system because it's something that they wanted to do in their own buildings. So, we've kind of become a leader in that area as far as how to do it right. So, we can take pride in that. I think that the overall goal was to reduce weapons in the buildings. We went from 42, I think it was last year in high school. We had 14 to start this year prior to. We had 26 weapons that were confiscated at the door and only one that made it into the building says January. So, to drop to one from January 1st on was a significant success for us. And then, you know, that was primary focus for really the first half of the year, three quarters of the year. When we look at everything else, you know, I wanna look at the safety staffing. Every space that we have in Schenectady now has a safety personnel, safety team member. We've increased to over 100 now. We, we had two, four years ago, we had two, we now 110. And I think that 75 were here for longer than a year at that point when, when the school year ended this year. So, the retention rate is strong. I would add to that, on top of the 75, another 10 have been moved on to other positions, whether they're restorative practice folks or they are attendance specialists. You know, we're continuing to grow our own and, and send people off in different directions and then make it a real career avenue for people to come to the school district that wanna work in Schenectady Rising. So, I think, you know, those things said, the one big learn for us this year for communication, we started the year out, again, we had a couple incidents, as Karen had made mention. We really got beat up pretty good in our listening tour to start the year. And, and, you know, we made a lot of adjustments. We had to announce drills this year. The state made a requirement for that this year, so we started doing that. One of the, the big asks from the teachers over the last couple of years was we never know when something's going on. So, we increased our communication to teachers when things happen, all building staff, the text alerts. We have done our best to over-communicate with the guiding principle of transparency. We aren't trying to hide anything and we want people to know what they need to know. So, I think we've come a long way in that. I can't say enough about the executive leadership team, the partners that I work with. Every department functions within these pillars. I think that every department has the same goal, which is the graduate success, seeing successful kids. And, you know, with that in mind, I continue to look forward to opportunities to add layers, to add additional features and, and really to kind of embrace, you know, it's the Office of School Climate and Safety and we do a lot of talking about how the climate is not there. So, I've been really trying to lean into that a little bit more, the climate, and what changes we can make now that people might be feeling a little bit better. As far as safety goes, their idea of safety, what do we do to change the climate now? You see some of the artwork we've put on the buildings. That is the, the pillars in the front windows here, the, the logo designs. If you've seen Woodlawn Elementary, they put the logos, or the logo as well as their Wildcat on their windows. We're gonna continue to look to do that in some of our capital projects as we move forward. Kudos to, to Facilities with the capital projects and, and, you know, the, I just went to Steinman's yesterday and, and, you know, Freshman Leadership Academy has really taken shape. It's gonna be an impressive building, I think, when people get in there once it opens up. I can't believe the progress that it's made over last year. And, and, you know, I think the best thing you could do is take a snapshot every year of where you're at. And I think when you take a snapshot this year, there's a lot to be proud of. So, that's where I'm at with safety right now. And I'm gonna pass it on, unlike many of my colleagues. I'm gonna have Kurt Redmond come up.
Good evening, Board. So, we're gonna start with technology around some professional development successes from the past year. And I really wanna start by thanking some individuals, our instructional technology coaches really take the lead in this teacher PD, what you're seeing here. We also have a great partnership with the Office of Teaching and Learning and the partnership with Carmelo Parente, the Director of Teaching and Learning, and kind of making sure that our tech initiatives are supporting the initiatives of the office as well. So, you can see we had a lot of PD teachers participating outside the school day, one of the highlights. Once again, we were able to run kind of our keystone event that teachers are now looking forward to each year, our Patriot Tech Camp. And really, the thing I'm the most proud of about that, those 20 different sessions were all led by Schenectady administrators or teachers. And we had some teachers that it was their first time presenting a professional development to their colleagues. And just to see their success and see them grow in that area and share their practice, it, it was a, a great success. Something that was new this year was Mindcast Cybersecurity Trainings that went out monthly to our staff. And we completed over 16,000 modules throughout the district. And if you know anything about cybersecurity, user error is really what leads to, to issues with cybersecurity. So, I really feel these trainings are not only gonna help us as an organization, but help our staff in their personal lives as well, you know, learning some of these skills. We also have a core data protection team that meets monthly with NAREC and goes through the NIST framework, which is the, it's the National Institute of Standards and Technology. It's really the benchmark around cybersecurity in the nation. So, we go through their framework and we, we work through our district cyber incident response plan just so that we can make sure, you know, we're up to date and have what we need as far as that's concerned. The other section on our slide is really the behind-the-scenes things that people may not, not see or know that's going on. We've done a lot with our network redesign this year. And really, the best way to explain it is in the past, the internet came into the district in two spots. It came into Mount Pleasant or it came into the high school and then went out to our buildings from there. So, meaning if either of those two buildings went down with internet, we lost six or seven other buildings. Even if there, you know, if there's a power outage at Mount Pleasant, it affected the six or seven other buildings on that side of the city, even if they had power. But I'm happy to report that we now have resilience in the system, meaning there's two ways in for internet in each building now. So, no building is dependent upon only one other building. So, that should help us, you know, to avoid those situations that we've had in the past. PA systems throughout the district over the next few years are getting upgraded. So, we've started with the buildings where there's been construction going on. As you've toured those buildings, you may have seen the speakers with digital clocks in classrooms. It's our new IP PA system in those buildings. So, so that's definitely an improvement. New firewalls, basically controlling the information going in and out of our district's network. Those were upgraded this year. As you know, we went to a different model for Chromebooks this year, 6 through 12, and usage is up. So, that's one, you know, one way to see how that model's, you, you know, being used. We can see the data at the high school. There was a lot more usage, you know, during the school day, that sort of thing. And we're still continuing to work through systems because we wanna make sure students that need devices at home, we still have a way to, to make sure that they have what they need, even though we're not sending all of the devices home anymore. And again, more network infrastructure work going on at some of our elementary schools along with the buildings that have been under construction. As we add new spaces that we're either purchasing or renting that we have staff or programs at, you know, we have to bring those up on our network. So, some, some work has been done at the Webster Street Boys and Girls Club. We've done some work at the Schenectady County Jail for the programs we have there and really brought the network that our staff uses there into our district network. And then the last thing on this slide, we had put out some new guidelines around printing in buildings and making sure that, you know, we're not saying don't print, but making sure people are smart about printing. The big jobs go to the duplicating center at Mount Pleasant. Medium-sized jobs go to copy machines and only smaller jobs go to our, you know, standalone printers. And then we, we are now in a contract with Break Fix. So, that means, you know, our tech staff doesn't have to spend time fixing printers. The company comes in and fixes those and also the consumables. And also the consumables, when printers are out of ink, automatically they will send the next ink supply. So it's really some efficiencies in, in our printing system overall. So you know, those are some of our highlights from technology from this year and, and some of the pieces that, that have been successes for us. And I think we're on to the last slide now. So I'm going to invite up the Assistant Superintendent of Innovation, Equity, and Engagement, Dr. Leah Kedley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Last but certainly not least, and actually it feels kind of a full circle to be able to end the slides just because Dr. Kodo started it and knowing that he came into this role a year ago for me to then fill this role and have the privilege of becoming the Assistant Superintendent of the Office of Innovation, Equity, and Engagement. So really the approach that I'd taken a year ago to begin was to split each of these into three categories of it being innovation, of equity, and engagement. And we have done a lot of really high-quality work in kind of refocusing, systematizing things and bringing it back to make sure that we're all in service of student and graduate success pillar. So when we talk about innovation, we've got a lot of new programming that's happening that's connected to the multi-generational family literacy program that's taking place on Saturdays. We've had it over at our FOC location as well as we've started to institute it in our middle schools and having families come in with their kiddos there, where we did a drone workshop with families and connected that to literacy as well as a photo and photography opportunity and learning and bringing in just some different ways to better and increase engagement. And really having that key and the idea that this is a partnership. And we know that the learning aspect can feel intimidating, but we want to make sure that our families feel like this is accessible and something that they can do. It's a passion project of Al Tompkins. And so he's definitely doing this work with, with his heart on his sleeve and trying everything he possibly can. But it's taken off and it's, it's continuing to gain some traction even as we're, we've set up a miniature family engagement center outside of the pool this year for all the swim lessons that are happening. And I mean, they've already connected with 15-plus families this week. I was over there this morning and we've ordered scholastic books that are, you know, geared toward K5 and all the way up to eighth grade and able to give some materials that are, are really accessible for our students to continue with some literacy-based opportunities and advertising the ways in which we can continue to engage with them. So you know, we, we have offered the after-school programming. If you recall, we had, you know, only a few school sites able to offer that last year. This year was able to be offered in all of the locations. I know as, you know, we talk about some changes and budgetary pieces, it might be something of consideration as we continue to move forward on what makes the most sense. But we do believe that being able to have that offered will continue to be something that's happening across all levels, no matter what. It's just making sure we find the best way to do that. The collaboration with all departments, I think you were able to hear from all of my colleagues this evening, some fashion or another, whether it was a person or a program that lives within the IEE team where they've been present or a part of some of that work. So we really have been intentional about, again, that student and graduate success component of it, but also really making sure that we're communicating and seeing how one piece might connect to the other piece and working smarter, not harder. And really trying to make sure that, you know, I had the fortunate opportunity of being a principal, knowing how that has that direct impact and make sure that the school might be feeling a little more support or, you know, the, the family element of it knows that they have a direct connection with a parent liaison now who can then go take them to an appointment or walk them through the, the how do I apply for a job? And, you know, and then when we move to our passionate people, we have parent liaisons in just about every one of our schools. And we have to remember that most of our parent liaisons, as well as most of the members of the IEE team, are members of this community. So we've also engaged in some professional learning as a team around navigating the intersectionality of being a parent, being a community member, an advocate, as well as an employee in this district. And what does that look like? You know, President Rivera came and gave a presentation on the importance of the board and the importance of using their voice and the ability to vote. And that was a huge, you know, success for our team to hear that and to feel seen and heard as well as to now have this knowledge to now share with our community because they truly are on the front lines. We, we've, you know, created more of a sister school model with our community school coordinators because we only have six of them. So we've also partnered them to also be, you know, a connection point with each one of the schools so that we have some equity in the way we're getting resources, the communication method, you know, whether it be restocking of our food pantries or just someone who can also make sure, you know, we've instituted lunch bunches with our MBKs at all of our elementary schools so that we're starting to really foster this community and this sense of pride of being part of something that's bigger than themselves. And so that's happening because this team has a direct connection with Brian Ledbetter, an MBK, and he can help give them some input which then can be filtered into our school. So again, trying to take some oneness within the department without overwhelming the school system as it's already running, but bringing high-quality programming and opportunities within the school day as well as after school. Then we have again, all these different grants that, you know, we're relying on at this time, but we're really trying to be that much more mindful of how each one of those dollars is being spent, how, you know, where it's being spent, you know, creating strategic partnerships. We were able to with the FOC grant partner with Urban Grief. And so after this community was met with quite a few tragedies in the fall, we set up Urban Grief and they were able to do some counseling and bring some groups in. You know, the team is really supportive and present and front-facing. I know Dr. Kodo and, and Damani, they went to meet with the parent of the, of the, you know, loss and give that compassion and empathy and, and make sure that even now we have checkpoints and if the needs are still there, we can be able to serve those needs, you know, whatever they may be, you know. And we, and some of these grants give more flexibility in what those needs might be and we try and find a way to make that happen. So our team, you know, this team has really done a tremendous job in elevating the work that needs to be done in these grants. You know, and then our partnerships with family and community, of course, that's our biggest pillar. But you know, as stated, we've acquired a new building this year under the Boys and Girls Club, Mount Pleasant site. You know, we're hoping to have a ribbon cutting in the fall. They're building bathrooms right now and then we're going to have some of our team members housed in that building and just have it be yet another hub that people can go to. It will be equipped with a fully functioning kitchen so we can actually do like some teaching, basic learning to cook skills and classes. So all of this is in that vision and that work. And it's so, we've done a lot, like I said, systematizing things and really creating a lot of operations so that we can continue to just take off and flourish with the way we're reaching out with our families. And then our food pantries, we continue to, you know, look at how there's a shift in the climate around all of that and, and fulfilling the needs within our community between our Farm-to-Family Wheels truck that's launched. You know, we've secured some funding from our Angelo Santa Barbara Assemblymen as well as we have some requests out with Food Council and grants we've just applied for, for Community Gardens and just continuity of funding and seeking ways to make sure that this need that is highly needed does not go away. And that maybe we continue to be a source of that. All of that said, we're getting a lot of recognition as being a huge partner to other organizations within the community, so much so that we were awarded Partner of the Year with Boys and Girls Club this year as being one of their, you know, people that they continue to want to partner with and, and has such a large outreach to our students and the families and what they need. You know, they awarded two of our students scholarships and recognition this year, which was, you know, a moment of pride for both of us to witness and see that these students are making a difference in their community and within their own lives. So that was really wonderful. And I'm on Schenectady shares as well as on the Board of Boys and Girls. And I've recently been asked to join the Steering Planning Committee for the Schenectady Public Library. They're continuing to see the value in us as a, as a district, having a voice and being at the table to make sure that that input is there so that the way that they operate within our district and our community is truly helpful and has a greater impact. So that's continuing to be really positive. And then I know Taryn spoke about it, but efficient systems and equitable resources. I mean, I can tell you the numbers. I can tell you I've got a meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM with Terry and a meeting later with Dr. Kodo because I already have made a tentative plan. If this funding goes away, what does this need to look like? You know, because we don't want to lose the opportunities for our kids and families, but we also need to be financially responsible and have a long-term plan for sustainability. So as she said with Right in School, if we had stayed in the past model we've used, we would have only been able to serve 400 students at elementary school for the same money that we're currently able to serve 750. So that's a big difference when we talk about what we know is in need in our community to what our money might be telling us. So they're harder decisions. I know not everyone's pleased, but we continue to listen. We continue to be cognizant of the, you know, dissonance that does exist and we try and work with that, but they are being heard and addressed at times. And I do try and explain the why often, just so that people understand. So because part of what I also got and inherited was the fact that those ESRA funds are gone. So we've really operated this year with a budget and starting to have the accountability conversations with partners, asking for, you know, what is your return on investment? And show me how this is really impacting our kids and asking them to change their price points because we're not going to pay for administrative costs. And being able to have some more of those courageous conversations that are necessary, but again, continuing to be very student-focused. So yeah, I think that's it. If there are any questions?
Thank you. We're actually going to submit questions.
Okay.
Last for Right, that's easy. All right. I do want to thank the entire team and Dr. Kodo for sharing so much information with us. It gave us, I think, a big picture of how all these offices and departments work together. And I really love to hear, I loved hearing, and I think I would, I don't want to speak for the Board, but I loved hearing the collaboration and the partnership. Because many have, quite often in big organizations, people work in silos and it seems like those silos are slowly but surely being broken down from what I'm hearing from the conversation that you had today. So we appreciate you taking the time to share everything with Dr. Kodo as well. We appreciate it. And for the last four, we, we will probably send questions to you that we were not able to ask right now. Okay, so thank you. Appreciate the team, thank you very much.
And I just want to uplift the team. Thank you for all of what you do. And as I lead the district, I can't lead the district without all of you. And I think, you know, as, as our Board President shared, this is, many of us have been here for at least four years. And not that they were silos, but we were all charged to take on a department. And I think what we're seeing in the conversation today is the synergy around the need to kind of work together. Because initially, we were just all kind of coming in and doing what we needed to do. So it's important that we're kind of bringing those pieces together. Although we, you know, shared our successes and our achievements, I think we got work to do. And the question of what's not working, are the things that we're not navigating. As the first year in this role, I've been doing a lot of just observing and reflecting. And as we go into this summer and into next year, you know, we'll be able to provide even more information as it relates to what's not working and what is working. And have the tough conversations as it relates to, the dashboard is going to be a big, big piece for us. It's not only going to do things for us internally, but it's also going to provide that information for our families externally. And we're excited, we're excited. Got the right team, the right place, at the right time, and we're going to move. But thank you.
We have no unfinished business to address for the questions that we'll ask the team via email. But we have a second opportunity for comments from the public or the Board.
Actually, bring us a deal on?
Sure.
Mike Silvestri, President of the Schenectady Federation of Teachers and also a Schenectady resident. I would be remiss if I didn't address the morale issue. It does exist, we know it exists. It is a long-term issue and has nothing to do with the current leadership. And I do want to state an appreciation from the SFT's perspective to have a leadership who has acknowledged it and is trying to work on it. And as Shannon said, it is not a simple solution. Like it is an ingrained, long-term issue that will not be simply fixed as other issues can be fixed. So I want to be very appreciative of our leadership that they do acknowledge it and that we do have those conversations. So thank you.
Thank you. I do have two quick comments. I want to thank Dr. Kedley and it was also Tasha, I forgot Tasha's last name. They had a Schenectady event a few weeks ago. It was, it was great. It was great. I mean, we had a lot of fun, community member families. There were staff members there, the police department, the CEOs were there, parent liaisons. Really fun. Deputy Superintendent was there, Dr. Kodo, Dr. Kedley. And I know there were some others, so I hope I don't miss anyone that was in the audience, but a lot of fun, a lot of fun. So I want to thank, I want to thank you for that. And I also want to thank Michelle Eden, Board Clerk, because you have done a lot of work for us. People don't realize this is like your first year full-time as a Board Clerk. And I appreciate you, you're like my work spouse in every way. So I appreciate you. We appreciate you, the calls, the emails, the texts, the calls, the emails, the texts. So I appreciate you very much. So I wanted to share that with everyone as well.
And just, I mean, we've had a lot of, so uplift those that are joining the district. So if you can please stand and be recognized, I mean, we've got, so if you can all stand, those that are, even if you're in position, thank you for standing.
Appreciate you all and looking forward to working with you, so.
Yes. Okay, so at this time, I will motion for the Board to go into executive session to talk about personnel issues. May I have a motion? Thank you, Board Member Kathy. Thank you, second Board Member Amanda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.